I am now calling the meeting to order. Let the record show that Mr. Cagle, are you gonna answer questions or somebody? Okay, any questions? We have our city manager over here, so you don't, you can act, he will answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Cagle. So we will now call the meeting to order. It's three o'clock. Let the record show all council members are here except Mayor Pro Tim. Is he here? It's Councilwoman Cobb's on. Neither one. Both are not here. All right, we will now start the meeting. We'll wait if anyone would like to leave. Mr. Jones, are you, Mr. Jones, are you staying, sir? Are you staying? Okay, the meeting has started. With that being said, we will have invocation. Mr. Jones, since you are already up, we will get Edmund Jones to do invocation and we will get the pledge of allegiance by council member, anybody would like to volunteer? Okay, Councilmember Solomon, please rise.
Our minds, hearts being clear, mercy gracious eternal Father, we bow first to say thank you for another day's journey. Oh God, we ask you to walk up and down this city chamber, touch each and every heart, give them a willing and humble and obedient hearts. Then those who come before this council, God allow them to speak with respect, honor, love and kindness. Touch us, oh God, and let us do the things that we know as we should to. Then God, we ask you to bless our service to men and women, where those who stand in an arm's way as we stand here enjoying the fruits of life. Touch them, oh God, and guide and protect them, and then, God, we pray that they will return home to their families safe and sound. Then God, we ask you to continue to hold our footsteps and regulate our minds. We thank you, oh God, that you watched over us all night long. And then God, early this morning, as you beeped over back to the heaven, you smiled on us as light as the rise to a brand new day. That wasn't public, so we thank you for it, Father. Now God, continue to hold our footsteps and regulate our minds. We realize God's one day, zoom and zoom, we shall run down from this hill of rain until our end, until our day, where I should keep us on your protective care. This is we ask you, holy and righteous name. Amen, amen, amen.
Our resolutions, uh, of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every single justice for all.
Thank you all. Mr. Jones, thank you. Once again, thank you all for attending tonight's, this afternoon, meeting. Thank you, Mr. Cagle. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please? Councilman Solomon?
Madam Mayor, may I make a motion that we approve the agenda?
Councilmember Segarra?
Second.
All in favor, yes, all opposed, no?
If I could confirm, is that motion to approve the agenda removing the, the item that's been withdrawn?
Yes, yes ma'am, thank you for catching that. That was so kind. As you know, we withdrew an item, Councilmember Solomon, the item was item number 11, and that item would be, Mr. Cagle, can you let him see item number 11? So he can say, uh, PH dash 25 dash zero six seven. Thank you, both. So to sum it up, the motion to approve the agenda by Councilmember Solomon and also Councilmember Segarra seconded, with the exception to pulling PH dash 25 dash zero six seven. Is that good enough, Madam City Attorney, with me saying it, or do they have to say it?
If you've restated the motion and there's no objection to that restatement of the motion, then that's fine.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor, yes, all opposed, no? Motion carries five to zero. For the presentations, Madam Secretary, would you please, for the whole entire agenda, read it and the person that will be speaking, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
PR 25026, Texas Main Street Designation, and PR 25027, Texas Downtown President's Award.
Will be presented by Ms. Kate Cazito, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I'm sorry, ma'am. Good afternoon. I'm so happy to see you.
Good afternoon, and thank you guys for having me. For this first item, I am very excited to talk to you about the Texas Main Street designation for the city of Colleen. A little bit of background on Main Street, it's a nationwide organization for more than 40 years. It has been recognized as the standard and the gold standard for downtown revitalization. And so if you know of a good city that has a great downtown, I can almost guarantee you that it's a Main Street city because they're working this program. Cities are accepted into this program, receive state-level technical assistance, training, design services and marketing support. Locally, Texas Main Street communities have reported over $5 billion in reinvestment into historic downtowns, created over 48,000 jobs and established over 12,000 new small businesses. Main Streets across the nation continue to prove that preservation drives economic growth and community pride. Main Street has a four-point approach that every Main Street community stands on. Economic vitality, which catalyzes smart new investment and cultivates a strong entrepreneurship ecosystem. Design, preserve and enhance historic buildings and public spaces. Promotion, market downtown's assets and identity through traditional, traditional marketing and special events. Organization, build partnerships and sustainable leadership. To be eligible to join Main Street, a city must undergo a rigorous evaluation and are scored on the following categories. Local commitment, demonstrated long-term dedication to downtown revitalization and historic preservation through adoption and enforcement of preservation ordinances. Organizational capacity, a structure in place to manage the program, including staff, partnerships and funding mechanisms. Historic character, presence of a defined walkable downtown area with buildings suitable for rehabilitation and reuse. Public and private investment, evidence of recent and ongoing investment in the downtown area. Economic readiness, active use of development tools, incentives and plans supporting economic revitalization and community support, strong local engagement demonstrated through stakeholder participation and council support. Just a background of all the work that you guys have been doing and city staff has been doing, the Colleen 2040 Comprehensive Plan formally adopted the goal of joining Main Street. We then amended and began enforcing our vacant building registry, began enforcing preservation ordinances such as demolition by neglect, signed requirements, both permanent and temporary, window coverings and continued review of every renovation for compliance with our downtown design guidelines. Organizational capacity, for Texas Main Street, for cities with populations over 50,000, there's a minimum staffing requirement of two full-time employees in a dedicated budget. The city of Colleen created the Downtown Revitalization Division within the city and hired both the director and coordinator. Internally, the city of Colleen created an interdepartmental downtown coordination team that exists across departments to move things forward. Public and private investment in 2023 and 2024, the city of Colleen saw over $15 million of private investment in downtown Colleen spurred by a city's investment into grant programs. The TURS number two supported efforts by expanding our grant programs and investing in streetscaping, both in the HOD and on Ransier. Economic readiness, I received, revived and extended the life of the TURS number two, expanded our grant programs to both interior and exterior improvements, created a sewer lateral replacement program to support new businesses in the area with aging infrastructure, adopted a residential tax abatement program for North Colleen, expanded the North Colleen Revitalization Program to waive development fees, held our first downtown developer workshop to train local investors on how to be small-scale developers in the area. Community support, the city created a downtown advisory board for stakeholders with the goal of establishing a permanent Main Street Board. The Downtown Division also created a downtown volunteer structure with over 1,000 volunteer hours served in downtown. And downtown sponsorship program was also created and to date has received over $85,000 in sponsorships. On November 7th, 2025, Colleen was officially accepted into the Texas Main Street program. And after two, nearly two decades of groundwork of city staff, leadership and community stakeholders, this designation affirms our long-term investment vision and collaboration are paying off and that downtown Colleen is once again recognized as a place of growth, pride and opportunity. Colleen now joins a distinguished network of cities from Georgetown to San Marcos, Washington DC to Oceanside, California, that have proven downtown revitalization is a citywide investment with regional returns. We are the only Main Street city in Bell County and among only 31 cities in Texas to hold both a Main Street designation and a certified local government status. What's next, a formal agreement with the Texas Main Street will be brought back to council as a commitment to upholding the standards of the program for a long term. Program onboarding with Texas Main Street, it's actually already started, Kira and I just finished our first training with them right before this meeting. Conversion of our downtown advisory committee to a formal Main Street Board, a visit by the First Lady of Texas to welcome us and continue moving forward. Communities are evaluated at the national level for compliance with the program for the standards annually, and we do have to meet those to maintain our status in the program. This is just a look back of how far we've come. This is Avenue D for reference. This brown building on the corner is Kinetic Images, and then that's Eighth Street in the distance. This is actually a picture of inside that building for reference, and then picture of the building across the street for reference of what it looked like. This is a photo of our boss program rehabbing the park outside of the municipal court, and actually you can see the renovation of the building behind it as well. So our parks team planting plants back in the planters. A muralist painting mural as a part of, a mural as a part of our facade grant program on Eighth Street. And this is the after photo of that pocket park and those planters. The streetscape, this is a up-close shot. This is an alley park behind 311 North Gray Street. If you've been out there, there's string lights and AstroTurf. And some photos of our downtown events, this is touchdown downtown, and then the Christmas tree lighting. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
You know, I am personally overjoyed. You know, it was a vision, and I can say this council, your staff, all of the staffs that participated in downtown, but most important, the small business owners who are the cornerstone of our downtown Colleen. So I am just grateful and thankful that the governor's office, when you said, I think you said the First Lady of Tech, please make sure, I know I'm on her schedule, but please make sure that I have that opportunity to meet Mrs. Abbott, because I don't think people realize how big of a deal this is for Colleen out of 31 cities in Texas, and to be compared in a group with Washington DC that have much more resources than we do, says a lot for the time and energy, Mr. Cagle, your staff, the employees that you've seen in the video of the pictures, and it was much more than that. I was down there. And also the volunteers that painted the murals, we thank them for that. So this is a community effort that we all should celebrate. I'll have one, only one recommendation. I am really big on downtown Colleen, and we should continue to have events, but as we continue to expand, I hope in the future that we could have those types of events throughout the city and highlight those areas on the great things that downtown can travel. That's what I'm saying. Downtown Colleen can travel. And we get the vendors that's downtown with their businesses to travel, and let other people throughout the city that may not have the opportunity to come downtown, because we have so many people coming in from out of town, experience a downtown revitalization experience. But other than that, I tell you, it's only three people I ever said this to. You are simply the best, your team, and the city of Colleen employees. Thank you so much, Kate.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Okay, I guess Mr. Cagle clapping, I guess we all clap, okay?
And I would like to-
I'm looking at legal like, oh, are we doing this? But I joined in. Yes, ma'am.
I was gonna say, I would like to thank, there's a few business owners in the back of the room, and I just wanna thank them too. Without their support and their investment, none of this is possible, so.
Yes, yes, it's truly a blessing. It is, it is, so I'm excited. Councilmember Segarra?
Thank you, Mayor. And kinda on that line, I was just gonna ask you, how, how long have you been here with the city already?
Just a little over three years.
Three years. And I remember when you came and we hired you, and we never really heard much about Main City designation. That's something that you put a focus on when you got here. And our downtown, this is something, as you mentioned, we've been trying to work on it for decades, and you've done in three years what a lot of us been trying to do for many years, so I commend you for that. And it's more than just a designation, as you mentioned, this is economic, we've been trying to revive the downtown, we put new streets in there and all that, and a lot of times, you know, over the years, people ask me, you know, why are we wasting so much time in downtown? And here it is, I mean, here's the reason for it. And one of the great things about our downtown that I really, really enjoy is that we have local, you know, we don't have like major franchise. This is really like a cultural center right here, because you have people that, you know, take the risk, you know, they, they invest in their businesses, they, they put out a lot of their own money to do things like that and take the chance that, you know, they're gonna succeed. And so I'm glad that at least they get to do this, and I know that because of this, it's gonna help their business, it's gonna help our downtown. And so thank you for everybody that's had a hand on this, and it's all because of you guys back there and, and you and the staff that were here together, so thank you.
That's good. I thank Mr. Josie Let's Eat Texas was the first one that made the big investment. Am I correct, Mr. Cagle?
I think you're correct.
Is that right, Kate?
So Josie was before my time, so it's hard for me to say who was first.
In that case, she started before you got here, yeah, she believed in it, yes, ma'am. Okay, Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Thank you, excuse me, thank you. So, you know, having revitalized downtown is the, you know, heartbeat of our area. I've been standing on this platform with a lot of people who've helped us bring these ideas to life. And again, like you, without our community involvement, none of this would have been possible. So I was glad that when I had, we had these wonderful ideas, we found a Kate to come in and help us execute them, because you understood how it worked, and you helped us bring it to fruition, because you were familiar with the process. But without the buy-in of the citizens and the understanding of what it was really gonna take, and I remember those days, having those conversations and how skeptical some of them were about putting their hard work, blood, sweat and tears and money into this area, but also how committed they were to changing and to breathing life into our downtown. They understood it and they got it. So again, I think every council member who helped us, you know, bring the vision to life, Kate especially for holding it together and pushing it out, but especially the business owners down there for believing in us and saying, we can try it a different way another time, let's give it one more go, and they joined hands and forces, and without them, none of this would have been possible. So thank you, guys.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and one more shout-out to Mr. Revelle, who has moved on to bigger and greater things, and also Mr. Labalis Hamilton. They, they were a part of the success of downtown. And I got one more thing to throw in, but I'm away on Councilmember Solomon, I just thought about it. Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too would like to just say thank you for a job well done. This is a big thing, as it really is. But I wanna say also, I wanna thank the, the residents, the Colleen residents for, for, because you also made not only the downtown merchants, and thank God for them, they have stood the test of times, but it was our residents that believed in downtown also. So we gotta give a shout-out to them. Thank you for what you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing at Councilmember Solomon. As I look at this Christmas parade, that goes back to Mr. Revelle and Labalis and you too, Kate. The events that we do hold downtown, that this many people come out and go throughout the city and do things. But one more thing, now this is a Mr. Cagle thing. As we move our police department downtown, I've had the opportunity to visit that building. I think every council member has, and we're adding more police officers to have a safe environment. I wish we could, council, look into a better building that it has had its wear and tear. And in the future, if the court, City Hall come back the bond in the future, that building, according to the plan that we had in place, it would go away anyway. It would go away. And they would, we need to just look at a better facility for them, because they're part of the family now. And without them, we would not be able to attend those events safely. I like when we had the parade, the person that was driving me, he looked up on the rooftop and said, wait a minute, are those snipers? I said, no, we ain't gonna say snipers, but they're there to be, be a garden angel, to watch over us, to make sure everyone's okay. So they do a great job, and I want to thank the first responders. And also KEDC played a big part in helping us to, to manage our contracts, the funding for that, to ensure that these buildings and that they would come into fruition with their funding that was needed. So once again, thank you, and we, we're proud of Colleen, and we're proud of staff and our employees and the business owners for what they have contribute to making us a Main Street downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you could, you're the next item, let me go right into it.
Continuing with good news, Colleen, here. This next item I have for you is the presentation of the Texas Downtown President's Award. Southern Roots Brewing Company, the Hacks Western Ware Building, was awarded the Texas Downtown President's Award for Best Economic Game Changer for a population over 50,000. This recognition comes from the Texas Downtown Organization, a statewide organization that celebrates excellence in downtown revitalization, preservation and economic development. This award honors a single project that had the greatest measurable impact on a community's economy and downtown vitality. I know many of you are well familiar with this project, but I'm gonna give a little recap here. The Hacks Western Ware Building is located in the heart of our downtown. It's a mid-century historic building that was originally established to serve the booming World War II era population after the creation of Camp Hood. For decades, the building served as a symbol of the city's growth. Here's a postcard of the building from the 19, late 1950s. And as we all know, as downtown declined over time, so did the buildings. For more than a decade, the Hacks Western Ware Building sat vacant, plagued with water intrusion, structural deterioration and vandalism. Community apathy deepened, and the property was considered for demolition by neglect. What was once a proud landmark had become a cautionary tale of disinvestment. This is what it looked like the day we had the crazy idea to go look at it. I shouldn't say crazy, but had the idea to go look at it. Recognizing both the historic and economic potential of the building, the city took decisive action, acquire the project, acquire the property, issue a request for proposals and find a partner to not only save the structure, but also redefine the trajectory of downtown. A Waco-based brewery, brewery, who had a history of converting historic buildings into thriving community spaces, Southern Roots Brewing Company was selected. They invested over 1.2 million dollars to restore the building and added 22 new jobs to our local economy. And according to GeoFence data, the brewery now accounts for 10% of all visitors to downtown Colleen. This project has become a catalyst for a broader downtown revitalization movement, inspiring neighboring property owners to begin renovations, new businesses have opened, murals have appeared and community events have expanded. The tone surrounding downtown has shifted from doubt to possibility. The Hacks Army Western Ware Project is now not just a place for beer and conversation, it's a symbol of resilience, creativity and what is possible when a community invests in itself. It stands as a model for cities across the country, proof that honoring the past can unlock new futures. This is ad lib, but if you don't know, the city was actually asked to present this as a conference presentation to train other cities on how we did it. So it is truly the state model on how to move properties like this forward. And here is a picture of it presently, and I believe Ms. Crystal Evans with Southern Roots Brewery is also in the audience, and I did bring the award for you guys today. With that, any questions?
Thank you, thank you for that. Ditto what I said prior, but we had the opportunity, and I remember me and you and Councilmember Solomon, I know other council members went to visit it. When we walked in, I was like, there was no way. You remember that? And I said, no. She said, ma'am, we can do it. And we went outside, say, how you get on top? And it was really, it was a, it was lack of a better word, a mess. So thank you for your investment, you and your team, contributing just one more business, downtown Colleen, to make this a success. Thank you. Anything else, council? All right. Yes, sir, Mr. Cagle?
Just to wrap up all the downtown stuff, this wouldn't have happened without you, because you set the direction and provided funding. This might have happened a decade or two ago, but there were no resources, and you guys did it. And then Mr. Revelle hired Kate. And every city department, everybody's had a hand in all of this, but Kate was the heart of it. When she took this job, she took ownership. It wasn't just a job, it's, it's, she owns it and lives it every day, and, and while every, everybody in the room, everybody had a part of this, she's the, she's the key that made it all work. And think about the criticism that was leveled at everybody involved in this, that we shouldn't be doing this, and now, now look at the rewards. And there's more to come. Thank you.
Mr. Cagle said, you were downtown, you lived it, no, you walked it. Every time I'm down, and she see me, you know which one I be coming out of all the time, she catches me, or you inside the same time I am. You're amazing, Kate. I thank you, Mr. Cagle, for pointing out, you took a lot of hits, a lot of criticism, but you still here, still standing, better and stronger than ever. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Secretary?
PA, PR 25028, Colleen Economic Development Corporation update, presented by Tyler Robert.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. I'm Tyler Robert, I'm the Vice President of Economic Development for the Colleen EDC. I wanted to give you all our quarterly update to city council. So first off, I wanted to give you update on our Blue Acre project. This is one of the ones that's been in the works for quite a bit of time, so we're happy to provide to council. We have closed on this property to the developer last week, and so we're excited about this moving forward with our industrial park. It'll provide over 170,000 square feet of new industrial flex space within our community for us to go out and recruit new businesses into the business park. Like I said, the property has completed closing, and the developer is, in the next steps, going closing, and the developer is, in the next steps, going to be presenting this to the Ters Board as their next process of the development. We'll be looking forward to the market materials we receive for this in terms of 3D renderings of the building itself here before the end of the year. We also wanted to touch on the recent growth that we've seen within the business park itself. MCI is a client support company that's located at 4501 Roy J. Smith. This is a property owned by the Colleen Economic Development Corporation. They've been with us by just over a year now. And from that point, they started out just renting about 13,000 square feet. Throughout this past fiscal year, they've increased that to 17,000. And now, as of November 1st, they're up to 25,700 square feet of rental space within this 50,000 square foot building. During that process, they've increased their employee counts from 40 to over 150 new jobs just for this building alone. And then working in conjunction with our partners at Workforce Solutions, Central Texas, we've successfully been able to help provide them with a job fair, where over 50 individuals were in attendance, and 22 members of their community were hired onsite. This is where we are today with that building as well. As we were seeing up until August 2024, this had as a vacant building. And then we're showing out how we've gradually been able to provide new tenants into this facility. And so we're showing here, up in Q1, Q2 2026, we fully expect this building to be completely rented out. And so we'll be happy to talk about that new tenant and the partnership that'll come from that here in the future. So look forward to that, and something we're really excited to kind of spearheading here into 2026. As you probably noticed throughout the slideshow itself, KEDC is part of this new fiscal year. We've kind of looked at our branding initiatives as we look towards our external marketing efforts. So you can kind of see through here, we've updated the brand logo for the EDC to truly reflect what we think is the industries and the community itself. And so we've looked at different defining factors for those purposes. So we're showing here that Colleen will connect people on purpose. We're a diverse, driven population fueled by military families, entrepreneurs, and skilled professionals ready to power our businesses forward. We're looking at industries and innovation from the fence, advanced manufacturing, to logistics and techs. Colleen is where expanding companies meet world-class infrastructure and workforce. And then local roots and global reach with our regional airports, our major highways, rail access, businesses can scale here confidently, whether they service Main Street or markets across the globe. And so we've actually begun to start rolling this out gradually within the business park. You'll see over here, we've kind of started putting our new marketing signs, making sure that everything, in terms of our recruitment efforts, was up to date. And so part of that process is, I know we've talked about it before, new website, new promotional videos highlighting the community, targeting industries that we're looking to recruit into the area. And so we're hopefully have that by end of year. And we've started this process also targeting those specific industries, new contract with trade and industry magazines to directly recruit to companies and site selectors across the US. And so just quickly, touching on the business development activity that has happened over the past quarter, KEDC has participated in six events that strengthened our business recruitment efforts and advanced the organization's long-term strategic position. In August, we participated in the Texas Consultant Summit, which is a site selection opportunity for us as an organization to get in front of site selectors and brokers from across the US. In September, we participated in Fabtech and the AURP Association of University Research Park. These provided opportunities for us to recruit advanced manufacturing industries into our community, as well as looking at opportunities to enhance our Wolf Technology Park development. In October, we participated at Semicon, which is semiconductor industry, to do more recruitment there. AUSA to help in the defense and research and development industries, as well as TDC to help provide us with more organizational development for Colleen EDC. And so our recruitment initiatives have continued to move along. This past quarter has been very good to us in terms of our ability to not only, one, get in front of companies that have actually reached out to us, both at the state level and from site selectors, but we've also, part of our marketing effort was to make sure that we were submitting to the most RFIs that we've received to date since I've been here. 16 RFIs were answered from the Governor's Office directly relating to sites here within Colleen. We've continued our branding, our business outreach through communication to companies that we've met with at these conferences, and then our marketing efforts. We've continued our quarterly newsletter in conjunction with the Forehead Region Economic Development Foundation. So hopefully you've all seen that newsletter and it's your emails. So if you'll have any comments or questions, please feel free to provide me with them as they come. And then I wanted to provide, before I left, update on some of the events that KEDC will be taking part of in 2026. We'll have our biannual luncheon in conjunction with Fred, just highlighting what the EDC is doing within the community itself. And then we are looking to provide a Economic Development Summit, which will provide EDC in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, an event which will provide a full day of panels, discussions centered around the industries and topics that are most important to us and the future of our region's growth. And so with that, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions? Okay. First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Solomon, Councilmember Kendrick, and Mr. Kegel, representing KEDC along with myself, and all past board members that sit on KEDC. Okay, Councilwoman Gonzalez, I'll wait till you speak, and I'll speak after you.
Thank you. Not so much a question, just as a statement. Going out to these events with you at AUSA, I had the opportunity to set my own mission. What I attended there was to find at least two businesses. I think I shared that with you as far as identifying some prospects to come back to our city, to do a go see here, to come back and explore our area for future economic development. And I was looking around, and I reached out to Councilmember Segarra, and I was like, oh, I've got this gentleman that's potentially interested as a prospect, and luckily, you just happen to be right around the corner. And so I got to see you in action. And so it's very important to me that we have a champion for the city of Colleen. And so being able to watch you interact with that gentleman as a prospective client for the city of Colleen, as a prospective business, whether he comes or not, just being able to watch you work and watch you be able to answer his questions in such depth that you did, was very empowering to me, but also gave me an extra layer of confidence, knowing that we've got somebody like you out there in the field, working as a champion for our city. It was always, you can see that all the time, we need a cheerleader for the city of Colleen when it comes to bringing these businesses in. So I think that we've got that in you. I just want to say thank you, because I got to see that in real time. I appreciate you.
Appreciate that.
Anyone else? Okay, sir. So once again, thank you for your presentation, but I have some questions. Madam City Attorney, if I'm off, please reel me back in. KEDC does a lot for the community, and the businesses that you bring in, you come and you tell us. But the questions the residents have, which are the taxpayers, which the council answer to, we hear a lot, is why we don't have a big manufacturing. And the other question is, why would we invest like in Wolf Park when we haven't completely filled industrial park one? And if you could address both of those, I would be appreciative.
Sure. Let me address, I guess, the latter question. In regards to Wolf Technology Park, it's really important for us to understand, you know, where we're going at the end of the day. The Colleen Business Park itself is, as a matter of fact, fairly built out at this point. Within the sites that remain within that park, we don't have access to anything over 10 acres in terms of parcel size. And so as we look at some of the companies, a lot of the RFIs that we're receiving from the state, a lot of that is looking at large acre tracts. And so part of our job as KEDC is to make sure that we're understanding the nature of businesses that are wanting to locate within our area. And so we want to make sure that we're providing the opportunity for the best effort. At the end of the day, we want to make sure that we're helping to diversify the economy, that we're providing the most opportunities for our civilians to have opportunities to grow their careers, for them to stay here. Not only people here, the military personnel coming out of Fort Hood, and their spouses. And so it's important to us to make sure that, you know, we evolve as a community, we evolve as an organization that can provide those opportunities for us as a community to move forward with the transitions that Central Texas has basically undergone. So there's a lot of opportunity here, and we want to make sure that we're able to capitalize on the opportunity that we're seeing. And so we want to make sure that we're well positioned at the end of the day as a community to not only provide for opportunities here now, today, but for the generations to come afterwards. And so that's really why we look at the Wolf Technology Park as a long-term project. And that's why we want to make sure that we're able to continue to diversify ourselves. And if you can go back to the first question.
The question we have a lot, why we do not have like a big manufacturing to hire 50, 60, 100 people. I get, Council understands this too. They get these questions. I know I do, and I know they do. Well, you do have jobs coming in, but they only for 10 or 12 people. Or they are specialty that we just don't have. So could you please address, I know the answer, because when we approach them, you gotta have land. That's, I'm sorry. Please answer the question.
No, no, you're right. I mean, obviously, the biggest issue for us right now is scarcity of land with access to utility and infrastructure, as it relates to a lot of the big manufacturers nowadays. And at the end of the day, we're competing up against some of the largest communities within our area. And so we want to make sure that, you know, we have the opportunity to scale at a sizable rate that, you know, allows us as a community to continue to grow, but at a respectable pace. So yes, land will always be kind of the issue, clean faces as a community, though we understand that, you know, southern development within the area along Highway 195 is the opportunity for us as a community itself. But with those smaller jobs, they usually provide larger, either capital investment to the community or higher paying jobs and wages. And so again, it's that continuing dynamic of providing different levels of opportunity for our community, where something might provide 200 jobs, they might provide that at a lower scale wage of something with 10 to 20 jobs. So we have to look at all those different factors, making sure we're providing ample opportunity for different positions for our community.
Thank you. And this is free enterprise, and the city nor KEDC have anything to do with car washes, coffee shops, or anything of that nature. People see a building, they want to set up, and they move in and open up shop. So thank you, sir. That was a great update. And thank you for answering the questions for the rest of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
MN 25028, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of October 21, 2025. RS 25182, consider a memorandum resolution casting votes to elect directors for the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County for 2026.
Thank you. So this is the discussion agenda items four through 14 for November 18, 2026 regular session. Madam City Attorney.
Good evening, or good afternoon. We're not in the evening yet. This is your last item for the year for the Tax Appraisal District Board of Directors. And so tonight, you'll be able to allocate your votes for the Tax Appraisal District. A little bit of background again, we've, you've heard this before, but recent changes to Texas Property Code replace previous process for appointing board directors for the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County. And two directors will be elected this year by the taxing entities for a term beginning January 1, 2026. So this year, all the taxing entities in Bell County nominated up to two candidates. The city of Colleen nominated Kenny Wells and Ricky Williams. And each entity now has a certain number of votes based on the percentage of the tax levy, total tax levy, to put towards whichever candidate they would like. The city of Colleen has 218 of the 2,000 total votes. The two candidates that do receive the most votes will be members of the Board of Directors for 2026. And the city is required to approve a resolution by November 18, tonight, 2025. So the candidates on the ballot are Sam Foulter, Oliver Mintz, Todd Scott, Kenny Wells, Wells, and Ricky Williams. You have been provided, and to assist you with allocating your votes tonight, you have been provided with an updated list of votes that have been allocated by other entities to date. That isn't complete, obviously, as not all of the entities have voted yet on this item. But you have that to be able to look at how you want to allocate your votes. And the recommendation is, city council approve a resolution to cast a ballot allocating its 218 votes to one or more candidates for the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County Board of Directors for 2026. If you are wanting to do that in here during the work session, since this item is on consent, you can either do a motion of direction to allocate the votes that will be included in your vote on the consent later, or you can pull this item from consent to discuss and vote on it separately.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I have some questions first. KISD, and they have 338, if I'm correct?
That is correct.
And Bell County put their support behind Mr. Kenny Wells, 378.
That's correct.
And Belton, I'm just trying to look, and Temple.
The city of Belton?
Yes, ma'am. I was looking. So they already, ISD, okay, the city has 194.
The city of Temple has 194 votes. And they have not, they don't meet and vote on this until later this week. They did nominate, their nomination was Sam Foulter, so you can.
And that's Temple?
City of Temple.
They only did one person?
They nominated one person, yes.
So there are the question.
But they haven't, they haven't allocated their votes, but that was their nomination.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, okay. All right. All right. Thank you. I wanted to get some clarity on that. Okay. Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for pointing out who's voted. My question is, and this is where I got a little bit confused on this, how many total votes, there's not a total, I know you said your top two vote getters, but what would that look like? Because I was understanding that you needed a certain amount.
No, there's no specific number because of the way this could all work out with the number of entities that's on this. However, it adds up, whoever adds up to the most votes, the top two vote getters. So there's not a number I can tell you, hey, this number will be able to guarantee. I mean, I mean, there is a number. If somebody got 1,000 votes, then they would be one of the top two vote getters, because there's only two votes there. But it's going to be, the top two voters are going to be less than 1,000.
And I know, I think I read that Harker Heights had voted on it. How many votes did Harker Heights have?
Harker Height, 46. And they voted for Ricky Williams.
You looking like me. KISD, Belton, and Temple, and Temple ISD already gave their votes away. So the way I was looking, like you looking, Councilmember, with Mr. Wells, with our votes, he's a sure win, because the rest of them wouldn't even accumulate to catch up. And then you can divide them, then that's the tricky part. Will he be a sure win if somebody else go get these cities and add to their number? Then that's the catch. Because we do need a representative in the largest city. So that's the way I was looking at it, trying to add them.
And I was looking at that, and I agree, Mr. and Ms. Mayor, you know, I'm in support of Kenny Wells, but I was hoping that, you know, with the votes that Mr. Williams got, somehow he'd be able to make it in there. But he's got maybe, because of that, maybe somebody else put him in, so.
So, sir, do you have a motion or not, or you just had?
I don't know if we can do that. Can we make a motion? We're not ready to make a motion yet.
If you'd like, in the work session, to do a motion of direction to include your allocation in the resolution you'll vote on later in consent agenda, you can. Or you can just pull the item during consent, pull that item and vote on it separately then.
Yeah, I'm okay to make in that motion of direction for Mr. Kenny Wells, the 218 votes that we have. If anybody will second that.
Okay. Councilwoman Gonzalez, are you seconded before I move on?
I will second with a question, though, please. Because your instruction at the last meeting, I would believe that you and Councilmember Solomon were going to reach out to KISD regarding those votes, but they haven't voted yet. Is that, that's what I'm understanding?
Yes, they have. They have, they have Mr. Oliver Mintz. They, that's a, I'm sorry.
No, they have not. They nominated Oliver Mintz, just like you nominated Kenny Wells and Ricky Williams. But they will vote today to allocate their votes.
So with someone nominating, I can only assume that's who they're going with. And even if with Bell County- even if with Bell County, y'all are, y'all are so on point, you and Councilmember Sagara. Even with Bell County, if Mr. Well get all of ours, we'll have a representative. If we divided, that's that gray line because K I S D is 338. And if they pick up some more, then they will for sure beat us if they pick up.
Strategically, in order for us to ensure that we have somebody on this board, that we need to go ahead and support one candidate versus risking splitting the, I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly, versus running the risk of splitting our votes.
Yes, ma'am.
And, okay. Okay, thank you.
And the big factor in this, Councilwoman Gonzalez, is the big number 378. When Bell County cast their vote, that 378 carry a lot of weight. And with ours, we're sure win to have someone on there. And but it's still the council pleasure. Okay, so she's seconded the motion of direction. Councilmember Solomon, do you have any comments on this item? Because the motion of direction have been first by Councilmembers Sagara and second by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Yes, sir.
The only comment I would have is that I agree, we need to have someone on, on the Bell County side. And, you know, it's not, it's who's winnable right at this point, that we can pull somebody on the, for the west side.
Yes, sir. With that being said, any more comments? Well, counsel, we have a motion of direction by Councilmember Sagara, second by Councilwoman Gonzalez. All in favor of the motion of direction? Yes. All opposed of the motion of direction? No. The motion of direction carries five to zero, and we're appreciative of Mr. Williams for even considering representing the City of Colleen. With that being said, Madam Secretary.
R S 25183, consider a memorandum resolution appointing members to vacant, expired, and unexpired terms on various boards, commissions, and committees.
Thank you. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor, counsel. These are the additional appointments of citizens to boards, commissions, and committees. After council made their annual appointments on September 16, 2025, some positions were left vacant. The following table show members with expired terms, expiring terms, or resignations, and whether the member is term limited or has requested reappointment. First is the Animal Advisory Committee. The subcommittee is Mayor Protem Adams, who is not here, so I'm going to skip over that one for now. Ma'am?
The committees?
Yes, ma'am.
He provided the recommendation for the Audit Committee and for Animal Advisory?
Yes, ma'am.
He provided a recommendation for Ricky Wilson for Audit Committee?
There's more than one person on Audit Committee. Ramon said on that committee.
He just wanted me to present his recommendation, ma'am.
Which, which one we are on now?
We're on the Animal Advisory Committee, and that vacancy is for the licensed veterinarian. And Dr. Rakia Stanu has applied.
And that was his recommendation for the veterinarian for the Animal Advisory?
Okay.
Thank you.
I can note that. Thank you. Moving on to the Audit Committee, and this is all of council. I believe Ricky Wilson, his name was provided. Is there another recommendation?
Well.
There were three applicants on file.
I only have, I'm looking at one, so maybe I missed it. Councilmember Ramon.
My recommendation was from Mr. Benton.
Okay, I see it. So we have Mr. Benton and Mr. Ricky Williams. Did Mr. Ricky Williams already served on the committee? Wilson. Did Ricky Wilson serve on the committee? Do anyone know? Oh, he have.
He served on Planning and Zoning previously, yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Alvarez, the person you nominated?
Mr. Benton.
Okay. Have Mr. Benton served on the committee?
Not that I'm aware of, no, ma'am.
And counsel, you know, we have moved people off committees that wanted to stay. But we stated, if you already served on the committee, we have too many residents that do not have the opportunity to serve. And that we would, if we had an applicant that have not served, we would allow them the opportunity to represent the city. With that being said, are we going to go with a person? Oh, Councilmember Sagara? Okay, Councilmember Alvarez, are we going with that person? Someone need to make a decision so we can move forward on this item. I recommend we go with Mr. Benton. Is everybody okay with him? Councilmember Kendrick?
I just have a question.
Yes.
One position.
It's only one.
There's only one vacant position, yes, sir. And it's a citizen representative position.
So counsel, we help this open our mouth so we can move forward. Councilmember Solomon?
I recommend Mr. Benton.
Okay, councilman, thank you. Anyone else? Everybody okay?
I support that, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Benton?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee. Previously, Mr. Chetty Amell and Mr. Michael Boyd were appointed in September, but due to other commitments, they cannot serve on this committee at this time. And a list of applicants was provided
Councilmember Alvarez.
Madam Mayor, I had one recommendation for the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, which was Mr. Johnny Frederick.
Sir, say that again. Who?
Johnny Frederick.
Frederick. And we have two positions, correct, Madam Secretary?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. And for clarification, that would be for the community representative, Mr. Johnny Frederick. Okay, thank you. And the other position is specialized in real estate development and the building industry.
Okay. So I really don't know realtors unless somebody do that specialize in it. I don't know, I don't know about these names. Did you see the names? Okay, thank you for looking at it.
That position can remain vacant for now.
Okay.
Unless you have.
Thank you. It's vacant. They don't see anything.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Sagara and Councilmember Gonzalez. Thank you both.
Okay. And last, we have the Heritage Preservation Board. Josie McKinney was a downtown tenant, and she has reapplied and would like to be reappointed. And then Michael DeHart was the Realtor, and he did not request reappointment.
Okay.
And there were four applicants on file, including Ms. McKinney.
This T O Y E V Dickens Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Had that person served?
Not that I'm aware of. But that position, the other position aside from the downtown tenant, would be a Realtor. And I don't know
Oh.
if that individual is specialized for that position.
Did anybody see that? Okay, we'll have to leave that vacant.
Yes, ma'am. But would y'all prefer to reappoint Ms. McKinney?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Does everybody agree with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we did have other applicants, but that's council decision. All right.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, whenever you ready.
R S 25184, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the city manager to review energy proposals from L 5 E LLC, DBA 5, and execute a contract with the provider offering the best value to the city. And O R 25014, consider an ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Colleen, Texas Limited Tax Note Series 2025 for fire department self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA's.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Good, oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. Please, come on up. You can introduce him, Ms. Tangalyn.
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
I apologize. I was just looking at this.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, counsel. Yes, I have Mr. Watson over here from Fire Energy to do the presentation. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for introducing him. Thank you. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
I apologize for that.
Well, thank you for having me. We've been working with the City of Colleen for quite a while. And one of the things that I try to make sure to always do is to update Mr. Kegel from time to time when we see things happening in the, in the market, in the electricity market. And I've been in front of this council before, and it is one of those times I wanted to make sure to get in front of you. So we'll jump right into it. This first chart, this is, excuse me. So this chart is actually from ERCOT. This is showing the peak demand from 2002 all the way up and forecasted out to 2031. This chart is actually a year and a half old, but I wanted to include this because this was the first time that ERCOT had to go out to all the different utilities around the state, gather their future load demand forecasts, put them all together in order to come up with their own. That resolution was passed. This was the first time they had to do that exercise. And so they're showing this was going into the summer of 2025. They are projecting that we would be at 86,000 roughly. We came in at 85,000 and change. It was a pretty mild summer, that summer, just like this past one that we just had. But they projected that we would be going from about 86,000 to 144,000 megawatts of demand by 2031. Now, when this came out, the market, for lack of better terms, freaked out. It ran, it ran up. And then everybody said, well, hold on, maybe all this load isn't going to come. And it did come down, and I'll show you that in a future chart. Now, where is all of this load growth coming from? A couple of different sectors, but our base load, residents moving to Texas, there are lots of people moving to Texas. But for every person moving, there's usually one or two people that's getting solar on their roof. So it's not really the residential load. Crypto mining is a large load that is growing pretty quickly. Data center load, massive, massive amount of electricity use there. I'll talk about that in a second. Hydrogen and industrial, really think of that as bringing manufacturing back to the U.S. And Texas being one of the most business-friendly states in the country, a lot of manufacturers, different organizations, industrial users are moving to Texas. And then oil and gas growth. Data center growth, though, is absolutely massive. And the scale at what these facilities use from the electricity point of view is, is pretty incredible. And it's adding a lot of demand to our grid. Now, this is an updated chart from just this previous summer. Lots of different colors, but what I'd like for you to focus on is the last two on the right of each year. So this is looking out to 2031. The purple bar that you see there, those are load forecasts based off of requests that the different utilities around the state have gotten from organizations. They've approved, and deposits have been paid. So it's about as guaranteed as that load is coming as you can potentially get. By 2031, you can see, we're looking at about 120, 130,000 on this chart. It was just updated last month by ERCOT that we are projecting to be at about 140,000 megawatts by 2030. So very quick growth here in the coming years. Now, the turquoise color bar, the tallest one there, you can see, those are load forecasts that have been requested from the utilities. They have not been approved, and deposits have not been paid. So not all of that will probably show up. But just to call your attention to 2031, if it did, that would be approximately 212,000 megawatts of peak demand. Reminder, we're sitting at currently at 86,000. So conservatively speaking, we'll probably end up somewhere between that purple and that turquoise bar. So call it a doubling of our entire grid within the next four and a half to five years. Now, supply and demand, when demand is growing at an exponential rate, but generation is not, the supply of electricity, prices have to go up. One of the things that we focus on is we do business all over the country and work in every deregulated market. And when we can see that there's prices in 11, 12 plus cents in other parts of the country, well, you have to think about, if you're a generator, a power plant, and you're going to spend a billion dollars to build a power plant, are you going to build it in upstate New York or Massachusetts where you can sell 12 cent power? Or are you going to do it here in Texas and you sell it at seven cents? Obviously, 12 cents, you'd make a better return. And so nationally, our prices really do have to go up in order to incentivize more generation to come to the state. This chart is showing prices going back to 2017. Each different color line is a calendar year in how it is traded over time. You can see how we've trended up over the years. On a zoomed in version, you can see there in the spring of 2024, in that big run up, that's when that first chart that I showed on the first page came out. And I said that the market kind of freaked out, and then everybody calmed down a little bit. Well, since then, it's been a pretty steady climb. There are a lot of different ideas in our industry, but most people in our industry agree that in the next five-plus years, prices will be drastically higher than they are today. What we don't all agree on is how much higher will they be? Some people think that 20 to 25 cent power is in the cards in the next five years. Personally, I think that's ridiculous and a little fear mongering. I think the growth in Texas would slow drastically if we saw that. But is 10 to 15 cent power in the cards? I think that's a real possibility. So we wanted to make sure to be proactive, get in front of the city. The last time I came in front of you, we had recommended two different contracting hedges, one that you were able to lock in at 5.7 cents, the other was at 6.1. So you're in a very good position currently. But what we're trying to protect against is that, you know, 5, 7, and 6, 1 turning into 11, 12 cents. Currently, we're looking at pricing to go farther out in the 7 cent range. I'll pause there and take any questions, may have.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Okay. Sir, I have, oh, Mr. Kegel, please.
I was just going to say what we're discussing is contracting for power after our current contract ends in 2032. We've got the 5 and 6 cents rates up to 2032. But this would be a contract. You don't spend money for this today, but this would be a contract from 2032 to 2038. Is that correct?
There's options all the way out that far. Yes, sir.
Mr. Kegel, with that being said, and sir, you can jump in. In 2031, there is a possibility the prices could already go up to 12 to 15 cent, correct?
And we're locked in at the 5 and 6 cent rate. We're locked in through that time.
Even though 32 come, can we keep, can we still keep the 5 and 6, even though that's?
I wish. No, so the, the rate that you have locked in out to 2032, you would remain on those, on that rate out until that point. What we're looking at is for beyond that, if you were to lock in at the 7 cent range today, for example, it would protect you down the road where if prices did go to 11, 12 cents in 2032, you wouldn't have to worry about that. You would already be locked in at 7 cents.
Right. For 2032.
Going forward.
However, going forward to what year?
There's different options. There's one-year terms all the way out to five, six-year terms.
Okay, thank you. So going back to you. But we don't want to lock in now for 7 cent because?
No, I think the recommendation is that we do, we lock in a rate from 2032 to some point further, all the way out to 2038. And just to let you know, about a month ago, A and M Central Texas had a luncheon that they, where they invited Encore in. We heard a very similar, very similar projection from Encore, showed all the ERCOT numbers, but specifically in the Encore area, which we're 95%. They expect exactly the same thing.
And we had a briefing at T M L. I know Councilwoman Cobb, I'm not sure if anybody else went to text, I mean Encore, in reference to what you're discussing. Okay, so I'm going to hold my questioning, questions, because I see a council member would like to ask one. Councilmember Sagara?
Thank you, Mayor. And just to be clear, I think I understood it. It's
It's like we want to lock in from 32 on forward at today's rates. And we can pretty much guarantee that the rates at that time, you know, they're going to go up, they're going to be higher. Just like everything else, you know, energy is going up, I wish we could lock water rates too. That'd be awesome, because I know water is going to be expensive. I think it's a good strategy, I think it's good to lock that in at today's rates for the future. You can't go wrong with that, so I like it, thank you.
And that would be 2038. Okay, yes, sir, my question is, anybody else? Okay, first of all, I thought data center, great presentation, thank you for the update. I thought data centers was gone, but evidently not in Austin area. My concern is with this growth, and I'm not sure if you can answer this. I know Texas is a welcoming state, we're friendly toward people coming in. And now we're trying to continue opening up, and I agree, that's my biggest concern. It's the wear and tear on the grid, that if we won't have the same, I guess, snow eery or whatever happened. And I think they still don't know what happened then. Oh, I'm sorry, we have another, no, we don't, I have another question. So that's my concern, have you had any feedback on that? How much the grid, did they update the grid or anything in that manner?
We, so to the best of my knowledge, and that's not an area that we specialize in, we're more on the, the market side of things. But from the infrastructure side, they have made a lot of improvements. Now, can we keep up with this demand and will there be issues? Who's to tell? It's, it's an uphill battle, I can tell you that. You know, the, the rates that we're talking about, that is the supply side of, of the electricity bill for the city. The other part of the bill is the delivery charges, the Encore side. We are expecting that those will also probably go up in the future as well, because they're going to need that additional revenue in order to, to improve on infrastructure. That is the big question, though, is, is our infrastructure going to be able to keep up? We have made a lot of improvements, but, you know, time will, time will tell, I guess.
Yes, sir, thank you for giving it your estimated, you know, shot at answering the question. But Councilmember Solomon, I noticed you clicked on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I wanted to ask, what does this look like when you're talking about locking in or giving the city manager authorization? Is there a cost upfront now to, to?
No, sir.
Or we're just making agreement?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilman Solomon, always looking at the budget, that's good. Any more question? Okay, now, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, I thought he was going the direction, that's why I was hesitant there. But maybe this is for Mr. Kegel, I guess, you know, with regards to the potential rate and understanding the risk that's posed here with the volatility that we expect to happen. In the event that we don't do an increase, we end up with double digits, which is most likely, what would that look like for us in the event that they decide not to lock in the rate currently?
Right, if we just write out our contracts to 30, just before they expire, you, you just take what the market has at that time. And every indicator that we see, it's going to be much higher.
And what does that mean for the average citizen, so for the average?
Well, we could, right now, if you, if you consider we're paying 6 cents, 5, two contracts, one is at 5 and 1/2, one's at 6 and 1/2. And those, the market could be 12 cents, 15 cents, 20 cents, if you get way out there. So our electric bill could double or triple is, is the fear.
Yeah.
And if you look at the other side, what are the factors that would make electricity prices go down? Well, demand is one thing, demand would have to drop, do we have a worldwide depression, something like that could happen? Or is there some fabulous new energy source? Or there's massive increases in efficiency in the current system? Those are things that would have to happen to, to drive the price down, and I don't know what those would be.
And for those people that might be skeptical about locking in versus not, I mean, we, would you say safely that we couldn't really even rely, or we shouldn't rely just on like the federal programs that might be available for municipality discounts and breaks, because they might not be there? Would you say that that's?
Probably, probably not be there.
Yep, thank you very much.
Councilmember Kendrick.
My question is, you said each one of these plans have a different terms on it as far as years. So from 2032, how far out can we go, only to 2038, or can we go further?
Yes, sir, so at this point in time, the longest terms that we've been seeing is a six-year term, which would take you out to 2038.
Councilmember Kendrick, are you done, sir? Any, Councilmember Kendrick, are you done?
Yes.
Thank you, sir, anyone else? Sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
The next item will be presented by Judith.
Do we have to do it now, we can wait till we get into the agenda to vote on it? We don't need a motion or direction on it, we can just wait?
Yes, ma'am.
I apologize, ma'am, for that. Yes, ma'am. OR-25-014, did you already read that? Okay, yes, ma'am, welcome back, Mrs. Tanglin.
Thank you, mayor, thank you, counsel. This item is for the limited tax note issued for the fire department SCBA's. Some background, on March 21st, the department submitted their decision package for the fiscal year 2026 budget. The fire department submitted a request for 150 SCBA units. On July 3rd, the city manager presented the proposed budget, which included the issuance of a tax note to acquire the SCBA equipment. And on September 2nd, the city council adopted the fiscal year 2026 budget. The Texas Government Code, Chapter 1421, authorizes municipalities to issue tax notes. Financial government policy allows cities to issue tax notes. And on those notes, we can issue for machinery and equipment in a short-term debt security that must be repaid within the seven years on an open market sale. For the tax note information, we have 150 self-contained breathing apparatus, the SCBA's, with thread savers, 29 rapid intervention team packs, SCBA decontamination machine, and one new SCBA compressor. The estimated is a 3.5 million limited tax note. The tax note pay over seven years at approximately 604,870. Payments made from accumulated fund balance and debt service fund. The partial increase on the tax rate fiscal year 26 included the tax note. The timeline, as you can see here, March 21st, the decision package were due. September 2nd, we adopted the fiscal year 26 budget. November 7th, we have a bond rating for SMP. November 10th, the preliminary official statement distributed the potential bidders. And today, it's November 18th, the sale of the notes are awarded in ordinance approved by the city council. On December 4th, we will have the notice sent to the purchases regarding the closing date. And on December 11th, will be the delivery, when the city actually receive the funds. Before we begin discussing the process, we have here with us Dan Wegmiller with Specialized Public Finance, who served as our finance, finance advisor, and also Bar Fowler with McCall, Park, Hertz, and Horton, our bond counsel. They are here to assist with any questions you may have. At this time, Dan will provide an overview of the process and the bid results.
Thank you, good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Dan Wegmiller with Specialized Public Finance. So the process we went through on this note issuance was to go through an open market sale process. The reason is, it's a very strong, active market bidding on this type of security. So with that, we will get the lowest interest rate possible that will be paying for this equipment that you're, you're purchasing. The note would be rated, and I'll touch on that in a minute. Bidders are from all over the country, as you'll see in a minute when we go over the bid results. The high credit quality of the city, we expected to attract strong bidders. And so obviously, today, we'll go over those bids and then seek your direction. The, one thing I wanted to mention, these are the bid results, we received nine bids, I mentioned the high credit quality. As part of the process, we go to Standard and Poor's and seek them, their review and assignment of a bond rating to this issue in the city of Colleen. That rating is great feedback for you, but it's what is utilized by these bidders to make a decision whether or not they want to invest in the city of Colleen and this project. And so through this process, we went to Standard and Poor's, and the analyst was assigned out of Denver, Colorado. The, the committee that she goes to to seek your rating is a committee that is made up of folks from Dallas, New York, Chicago, Denver, kind of their offices all over the country. Upon review, they submitted a rating of AA stable, so that's two notches from the highest rating possible of AAA. Their comments included, and these comments are directed to the investors who are trying to make that decision, but they're great feedback for you all. Their review resulted in their assessment that the broad diverse tax base supported by four cavasses in the I-35 corridor is driving the robust economic development in Colleen. In addition, they consistently note the positive financial performance supporting maintenance of healthy reserves in line with the formal policy level of the city and the flexibility of cash-funded projects that you've done as well. The comprehensive financial policies and practices, including conservative revenue expenditure assumptions based on historical data and long-term financial projections, and a rolling capital improvement plan. The city maintains formal policies for reserves and investments as well as a robust debt management policy that contains both qualitative and quantitative restrictions governing debt issuance. Finally, the debt issuance plan, when matched with the debt-to-market value metrics they look at, and their assessment indicates the tax base's ability to support this level of debt and your capital planning. So it just notes, you're AA, high-rated because of all the things that you do year in and year out to position yourself for that credit rating. As a result, as you see on the board, nine firms from across the country, Chicago, Dallas, Philadelphia, New York, Memphis, Milwaukee, and Minneapolis, they all bid on this. 2.699745% is the interest rate provided. So that'll be our recommendation to accept that bid from Mesero. I want to note, the analysts from Denver had, you know, once city staff presented their responses to all the different questions asked, they had zero follow-up questions because of the detail and the depth of the responses that they really answered everything they had. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. And Bar Fowler, the city bond counsel, is here as well, if any questions.
Thank you, sir, as you know, our finance team is, is simply the best. And they do an excellent job under our director, Mrs. Tanglin, great job they always do. Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you, mayor, just curiosity, I was looking at these bids here, and how long is that bidding process open for?
So as you can see on this, the bids received, they open up, they could bid at 10:30 in the morning, the cutoff was 11:00 a.m. So they, they could start bidding, as you, you note, some submit early and some submit late. And there's no rhyme and reason to, to who wins first or last. And nobody sees the bids until 11:00 a.m., we don't even see it until it populates.
No, and that was it, because I wasn't sure if it was like days, because it looked like they all bid it within 20 minutes. So in 20 minutes, it was open and closed, so that's pretty quick, so.
It was, and there, there's a lot of issues in the market, because with a holiday week next week. But again, quality brings out a lot of bids.
And that's a good thing, you know, when they go out there, they doesn't even look, they just bid, 20 minutes, we're done.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
The next five items will be presented by Wallace Mesher. PH 25065, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by city staff on behalf of the property owners. Case number Z2518, to rezone approximately 1.39 acres, being Lot 3, Block 2, out of the Julius Alexander Industrial Subdivision, from N1 Manufacturing District to R3A Multifamily Apartment Residential District. The subject property is locally addressed as 400 Liberty Street, Colleen, Texas. PH 25066, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Peter J. Stanenich and Cleopatra Dover Stanenich, case number Z2530, to rezone approximately 1.477 acres out of the MT Martin survey, abstract number 963, from A Agricultural District to B3 Local Business District. The subject properties are generally located between the intersections of Beals Loop and Tremere Road, Colleen, Texas. PH 25068, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Mitchell and Associates, Inc. on behalf of Laurent Johnson, Sr. and Laurent Johnson, Jr., case number Z2533, to rezone approximately 0.230 acres, being lots 10, 3, 11, Block 1, Stringer Edition, from B5 Business District to RF, R3F Multifamily Residential District. The subject properties are locally addressed as 805 and 807 West Avenue I, Colleen, Texas. PH 25069, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Clark Associates on behalf of OG Central Texas Partners, LLC, case number Z2534, to amend the planned unit development, PUD, for approximately 31.005 acres, being Lot 1, Block 1, final plat of 5100 Janelle. Phase 1A, Block 1, final plat of 5100 Janelle. Phase 2A, Lot 1, Block 1, final plat of 5100 Janelle. Phase 2B, and approximately 15.2 acres out of the Thomas Robinett survey, abstract number 686, and a replat of Lot 1, Block 1, Elms Creek Edition, Phase 2. The subject properties are generally located on the south side of Janelle Drive and east of Clear Creek Road, SH 201, Colleen, Texas. PH 25070, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the corporate city limits of the city of Colleen, Texas. DA 2501, by disannexing approximately 126.71 acres of land, including lots 1 and 2, Block 1, out of Live Oak Acres Edition, and the remainder out of the James H. Evitz survey. Abstract number 287. The subject property, property is generally located on the south side of Chaparral Road, between East Tremere Road and FM 3481.
Thank you, good afternoon, Mrs., not Tanglin, Mrs. Mesher, good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council. The first public hearing item tonight is a request, it's a city-initiated request to rezone approximately 1.39 acres, locally addressed as 400 Liberty Street, from M1 to R3A. Again, this is a city-initiated request to rezone the existing property to allow for the use as a multifamily residential apartment complex by right. If approved, the request will amend the zoning of the property to make it consistent with the existing multifamily residential land use. Existing structures on the site are currently considered legal non-conforming. Per Section 3154, a non-conforming structure cannot be rebuilt in case of total destruction. This property did have a fire recently, and so the property owner plans to rebuild an apartment building in its place. So rezoning the property to R3A will allow the property owner to submit permits for the proposed multifamily building. Subject property is located within the neighborhood infill growth sector and designated as campus on the future land use map. The red star on your screen indicates the location of that property. This is an aerial of the site. As you can see, there are three multifamily apartment buildings on the aerial, one of those did burn down, so they're just looking to rebuild it. And in order to do that, they need to rezone the property. So this is, again, a city-initiated item that we're taking forward on behalf of the property owner. This is a view of the subject property facing east on Liberty Street. This is a view of the subject property facing east on Liberty Street. View of the subject property facing southwest. View from the subject property facing northwest. We notified 17 surrounding property owners, and to date, we have received no written responses regarding the request. This is a notification boundary map. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the item to rezone the property from M1 to R3A as presented. Planning and Zoning Commission on October 13th recommended approval by unanimous vote of five to zero. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Councilmember Kendrick.
Good afternoon. With this property, has it already been checked to ensure that it's going to fall within code before we vote on this?
In terms of, are you asking about the setbacks?
The structural piece of the building itself.
So there was an existing building on the site that did burn down, so the intent, the applicant's intent, or the property owner's intent is to rebuild that building. There are, I believe, some setback concerns, so once the property, assuming the property is rezoned, that will establish the setback requirements, and from there, there will likely be a request for a zoning variance needed as well in order to move this project forward.
Okay. That's the only question I have.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Secretary.
We're just waiting for the presentation to pull up. I've already read these items off.
Yes, ma'am.
Case Z 2530 is a request to rezone the property on, sorry, it's a request to rezone approximately 1.477 acres from Ag Agricultural to B3. Subject properties are generally located between the intersections of Beals Loop and Tremere Road. Property owner has submitted a request to rezone the subject property from Agricultural to B3 to allow for development of a retail business on the property. Property is identified as neighborhood commercial on the future land use map, indicating compatibility with the proposed use. The red star indicates the location of this property. This is an aerial of the site. As you can see, it's currently undeveloped. This is a view of the subject property from Tremere Road. View from Beals Loop facing north. View from Beals Loop facing south with the subject property on the left. We notified nine surrounding property owners regarding this request, and we received one written response in opposition from the neighboring property owner to the south. In his response, he requests, he expressed his opinion that B1 would be a more appropriate zoning designation than the requested B3. So this is the notification boundary. You can see here, the yellow star indicates the location of that opposition. Staff does find that the applicant's request is consistent with the neighborhood commercial designation of the property and with the recommendations outlined in the comprehensive plan. We are therefore recommending approval of the applicant's request as presented. The Planning and Zoning Commission on October 13th recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Apurres.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Mesher, for the presentation. My only question is, it seems that the zoning makes sense to me. I just wanted to confirm, and maybe for the public as well, that before any development would happen on this piece of property, it would have to be platted. It appears that it's unplatted at the moment. During that plating process is where they would dedicate, require right-of-way?
They would dedicate any required right-of-way and also determine the access.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Madam Secretary, did you read number 13?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
All right. Did we just go over number 67?
2533.
Okay.
This is item 12.
Right, because 11 has been pulled.
11 was with John, so item 12 on your agenda is zoning case Z 2533, which is a request to rezone the properties located at 805 and 807 West Avenue I, from B5 to R3F. If approved, the applicant intends to replat the property into one lot with the goal of developing a triplex or quadplex on the property. Subject property is located within the infill and enhance area on the growth sector map and designated residential mix on the future land use map. The red star indicates the location of that property. This is an aerial of the site. As you can see, it's currently undeveloped. There are two separate parcels, and again, the applicant's intent is to replat that into one lot in order to develop it. This is a view of the subject property facing north from West Avenue I. View of the adjacent property on the opposite side of West Avenue I. View from the subject property facing east and facing west. We notified 57 surrounding property owners, and we've received no written responses regarding this request. This is the notification boundary, and we are recommending approval of the request to rezone the subject property as presented. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions? Mrs. Mesher, thank you and your staff. You sent that out to 57 residents that would be impacted by that development. 57.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a lot for the council guidance, and there was no reply. We get a lot of negative feedback on items like this, but we do ask the residents that are being impacted by this development, and as you stated, 57 residents, either they're okay with it or they chose not to respond. But thank you and your staff for following up with the residents that's impacted by it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Any other council member before we move forward?
All right. Item 13 on your agenda is zoning case number Z 2534. This is an amendment to an existing planned unit development. Subject property is generally located on the south side of Janelle Drive and east of Clear Creek Road. You'll recall that in June of 2023, the council approved a PUD for the subject property via ordinance number 23-049. This is the approved PUD concept plan that was included in that ordinance. The requested amendment tonight focuses on this area here outlined in red. They are requesting a minor amendment to the PUD in order to accommodate a contemplated coffee shop. Section D of the approved PUD states that there shall be four buildings constructed whose sizes are estimated individually at 6,000 square feet, but may be as small as 2,500 square feet and as large as 9,000 square feet, with the aggregate interior square footage of all buildings estimated at 22,500 square feet. In order to accommodate the development of a proposed drive-through coffee shop, the applicant now seeks to amend this standard to reduce the minimum size of a commercial building within the PUD from 2,500 square feet to 1,500 square feet. The proposed amendment also seeks to change the maximum size of a commercial building from 9,000 to 12,000 square feet. If approved, the proposed amendment will modify Section D as follows. So it'll change that language accordingly from 2,500 to 1,500 square feet for the minimum and as large as, it'll change 9,000 to 12,000 square feet. The applicant has also submitted a revised PUD concept plan, which proposes to change the design and configuration of the commercial component in order to accommodate the contemplated drive-through coffee shop. So this is the proposed amendment to that concept plan that I referenced just a little while ago. So you can see, this is the proposed drive-through coffee shop here, and so the approved concept plan had basically a mirror image of what you see on the south side, and so they're just contemplating amending that slightly to accommodate the proposed development. This proposed revision ensures that the drive aisle for the coffee shop will be in the rear of the building, thereby ensuring a high-quality pedestrian experience. It also provides for pedestrian seating area in front of the standalone coffee shop, which will serve as a pedestrian amenity for the area. Subject property is located within the intended growth sector and neighborhood infill area on the growth sector map and designated residential mix and regional commercial on the future land use map. Red star indicates the location of that property. This is an aerial of the PUD area. So because this is a PUD amendment, we did notify all property owners within 400 feet of the entire PUD. This is a view of the subject property facing east from Clear Creek. View of the adjacent property facing north. View facing south. We notified 132 surrounding property owners, and we have received no responses regarding this request. This is the notification boundary, and with that, we are recommending approval of the proposed PUD amendment as presented. Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, and that was 132 residents you notified in that area, and they did not respond back.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm really not a big fan of PUD, really I'm not, but this particular one, what I like about it, I remember it when it was first presented to us, is that it is so on point with the 2040 comprehensive plan, which is just like I feel about downtown Colleen. Comprehensive plan is very important to me, where the individuals that do choose to live in this area, everything they need, all they got to do is walk out their house and walk down the street. They really don't have to leave that area if they didn't want to. So this is really a good example of following the comprehensive plan 2040, where the residents at input, developers, builders, staff, council, that this particular project follows to the T, and I really like this. I'm hoping in the future, if council vote for more PUDs, that it would follow this example. Any questions? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. The last public hearing item tonight is a petition for disannexation of 126.71 acres. So on October 1st, city staff received a petition for disannexation submitted by Jane Seals on behalf of WBW Single Land Investments, LLC, Series 138, for the disannexation of three tracts totaling approximately 126.71 acres, generally located on the south side of Chaparral Road between East Tremere and FM 3481. The red star on your screen indicates the location of that property, and the area highlighted in purple on the screen is the area proposed for disannexation. As you can see here, this is a map from Belcad showing the three individual parcels that are requested for disannexation. Subject properties were annexed into the city of Colleen as follows. Property ID 170866, which is comprised of 43.7 acres, was involuntarily annexed in 2008 via ordinance number 07-112, and property ID numbers 364611 and 448337, totaling 83.01 acres, were voluntarily annexed by the property owner on June 11th, 2019 via ordinance number As required by Chapter 43 of the Texas Local Government Code, each annexation ordinance includes a service plan detailing the provision of municipal services. In its petition for disannexation, WBW Land Investments, LLC asserts that the city failed to complete the service plan improvements to provide services to the property. Texas Local Government Code, Section 43-056, subsection G, states that if the annexed area has a lower level of service, infrastructure, and maintenance than that within the corporate boundaries of the municipality before annexation, a service plan must provide the annexed area with a level of services, infrastructure, and maintenance that is comparable to other parts of the municipality with similar topography, land use, and population density. There's currently an existing 16-inch water distribution main on the south side of Chaparral Road immediately adjacent to the subject property. To provide wastewater service to the property, a sewer main would need to be extended down east Tremere and Chaparral, but the 2007 and 2019 annexation service plans both permit the use of onsite sewage, of an onsite sewage system, i.e. a septic system. Subject properties consist of approximately 126.71 acres of undeveloped land. The character of the surrounding area is predominantly rural with very low residential density. There are several large acre home sites, large acreage home sites in the immediate area, which do not have access to all city utilities and are served by well and/or septic systems. Therefore, the subject property currently has access to a level of services, infrastructure, and maintenance that is comparable to other parts of the municipality with similar topography, land use, and population density in accordance with state law. WBW Land Investments, LLC also asserts that the city has failed to construct numerous capital improvement projects around these properties in order to support the development of the properties. The 2007 and 2019 annexation service plans both outline several water and wastewater capital projects that were planned for the area, including water main extensions and a lift station, which have not yet been completed. However, both plans also provide that the city of Colleen finds and determines it to be unnecessary to immediately acquire or construct any currently scheduled capital improvements. The 2007 annexation service plan states that as property in the annexation area is developed, property owners will be required to extend necessary utilities to support their development in accordance with Colleen Code of ordinances and Public Works Department practices as may be amended. Nothing in the plan shall require the city to provide a uniform level of municipal services to annexed areas if population density is sufficiently distinct to justify a different level of service. The 2019 annexation service plan also states that if the existing city utility facilities are not adjacent to the development, the developer shall construct the necessary extension of water and sewer mains, force mains, and lift stations. Sewer mains across Chaparral Road inherited jokes are not adequately sized, so future developers must accommodate the full cost of extending the infrastructure within their development. With that, city staff finds that the city of Colleen has met all legal obligations to provide services to the property in accordance with the 2007 and 2019 annexation service plans and in accordance with Chapter 43 of the Texas Local Government Code, and we are therefore recommending disapproval of the applicant's request, petition for disannexation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, thank you. Counsel, you have any questions before I ask Mr. Kegel, Mr. Mesher this question? Councilmember Sagara.
Was this property, was it originally part of our CIP plan?
I believe it was.
Yeah, we probably need to get Andrew.
He's in the back, right there.
I believe it was, but I don't want to speak out of turn.
And if it was, I don't remember, I don't know if we as council took it out or what?
Yeah, I don't recall having any future CIP in this location other than widening a Chaparral road and having the water line. Everything else is really developed, was determined by development needs.
So it never was part of it, or?
It was part of that where, well, I got, I mean, I'm not familiar with the 2007. I think that's probably the last one that we were looking at, but the more recent ones, we don't have any projects in this area that were proposed.
Okay. All right. That's my question. Thank you.
Mr. Sagara, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Oh, no, I have a question for you. Oh, no, sir. No question. I was just saying good afternoon. That's all. Okay, anybody else? So Mr. Kegel, and I know we have spoken on this several times, and Mrs. Mesher, you can weigh in. As we talked about, Mr. Kegel, most annexations, if people want to go, we can let them go. But in this case, there's an exception to the rule, that why the staff voted to keep it. Did we have that discussion?
Yes, ma'am. That's, I think you're thinking of the ETJ discussion, which may end up on a future agenda item.
So this is not the one?
No, ma'am. The ETJ question is if they're within five miles of a military base. Otherwise, in the ETJ, they can give us a letter and they're gone. But this is, they're actually, this property is actually inside the city limits. So it is a, it's a different process than removing themselves from the extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Okay. Thank you for that, because we talked about a lot of properties, and that was a big one too, the ETJ, and I think Councilmember Solomon and Councilmember Kendrick was a part of that. Okay, I remember it. Sorry about that, Ms. Kegel. And also, we talk a lot, so, oh my God, it just runs together. Okay, with that being said, okay, thank you. There's no questions from council. All right. I think this is where we take a break. Let me look and... Let me look and see, because I do go into citizen comments. So we just finished that one right there. Okay. Counsel, before we go into a break, I would like citizens to have opportunity to speak if it's okay with you, and then we can take our break. Okay. Are y'all all right with that? All right. Citizen comments are open. Mr. Cochran, you have three minutes, sir, and good afternoon.
I just want to start out by saying I find it interesting, everybody plotted theirself on the back and can't see beyond their nose. We actually have two breweries, one's called the Phantom Warrior Brewing Company that's not located in this downtown area. I want to give a shout out to them, they need your love and support as well. My decision topic today is about the appointment of vacant boards, commissions, and committees. Interesting that the Colleen Housing Authority was not listed anywhere on your slides, even though without notice or fanfare. Bruce White was reappointed for the third time. As you noted earlier today, seems the council broke its own rules by saying, is there anybody else that wants that position? Well, apparently they didn't look. Is there anybody else that has served more than two years? Could they go to three? They haven't looked, they just gave it to him automatically. It should be noted that allegedly, him and his crew have not really improved the Colleen Housing Authority properties since him and his other commissioners have been appointed to this board. Let's move on. Council representatives for the Lions Club Senior Center Advisory Council, the Planning and Zoning, and the Parks and Recreation Meeting. All council members should be going to those meetings, should be listening to those meetings, but apparently for the last three years, I personally have witnessed that no Solomon, no Cobb have attended those meetings. It's kind of sad that they're supposed to be there representing the people when they haven't attended the Senior Advisory Council meeting or the Parks and Rec meeting. Let's move over, well, let's go backwards. They do go to Washington DC, Tampa, Florida. There's a committee and a conference starting tomorrow, that's probably why we have two vacant seats up here. It's over in Salt Lake City. Looks like the council has more time to go to other places than look at their own place. Planning and Zoning Commission, recently a Planning and Zoning Commission appointed a new member back on October 1st. Two weeks after, I think that mayor's close friend who was elected to the Planning and Zoning went to a conference over in Bryan, Texas. She attended the American Planning Association Texas Chamber of Commerce. Strange, this person has no background in planning of cities, has no college degree in planning cities, and yet this person was able to go at tax-free dollars to attend this three-day conference. Must be nice to be friends with the mayor and get that preferential treatment. Let's move on. The mayor, earlier this year, and the council sent out a big old flyer that says the city hall was falling apart, the walls were crumbling, the roof was crumbling based on the leaky roof, people shouldn't be on the third floor. It's interesting that we have no council committee members, boards, or commissions that's looking at this building. I've been here three years and it seems like this building's falling down, but no one wants to fix it or create a committee for it. Last thing is the Crime Solutions Committee. Mayor attended it once, 30 days after she attended, it canceled that committee. And then last meeting, she said she wanted to request $90,000 to pay for a robotic dog. I myself, back in January, requested $80,000 for some ballots for downtown protection and that was overlooked, I guess. Good luck, everybody.
Mr. Forino, good afternoon, sir, you have three minutes.
Dr. Longview at Seton, brilliant science surgeon. Energy, we're all worried about how much you could pay. Once again, Mr. Kegel, there is a miracle technology out there. Waste to energy, we're not going to run out of garbage anytime soon. We could generate our own power and make a little bit of money off of it, take the load off the grid and the citizens as well. But no discussion on that since I suggested it a while back. Economic development, it'd be nice if we actually had some. We've got a railroad, an interstate, and two airports. We should have commerce and industry pouring out of our ears. Up to Waco, rough analog to our setup that we have down here. We don't even come close. Topic was brought up, well, it's a matter of how much land we have. Well, in the 10 years that I've been watching all this, perhaps, maybe, if every square inch of bare earth in this town was not rezoned as R1, maybe we would have had Toyota, Dell, Federal Express, jobs that pay more than $25,000 a year, actual jobs. People could grow, if we had a power plant with a trading program, et cetera, we have people get certifications, everything across the board. But no, for years I can recollect, for over a generation, talking with people who've been around here for a long time, all you folks care about is real estate, real estate, real estate, real estate. When we go to complain about it, they go, oh, there's, the citizens can't have this, can't have that. Why don't we have a grocery store? I've made calls, people I've talked to, the money ain't there. They're not biting because the people around here don't earn. If they can't earn it, they can't spend it. So this farce of downtown, let's pin an award here and get a designation for that, that's great. Where are the people? This museum was supposed to attract a whole bunch of people. There's no commerce coming in from that. I mean, this isn't vision, this is delusion with our tax money. Give the people in this town a shot. A great STEM program that KISD has, get a leg up. Mayor says, oh, these are the kids that are coming back. They're not coming back, mayor. There's no place to come back to. If they get a STEM degree and an ounce of talent, every other town but Colleen is taking advantage of that, but us. That's pathetic. We throw millions upon millions of dollars at KEDC. What do we get back? Nothing. We get promises, pie in the sky, oh, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. Well, hey, give me 10 bucks, I'm gonna colonize the moon. I can tell you that for 10 years. Well, as I keep saying, hey, I got a nice little placard and a graph and a picture of what it might look like. Quit wasting our money, actually listen to us.
Thank you.
Let me get this straight, based on the presentation that was not made publicly available, KEDC now needs to use TURS money for infrastructure improvement on properties that KEDC owns. Isn't that why they get water and sewer money? Is to improve public infrastructure in order to bring in that economic development? Out of that water and sewer money or the money that we paid out of our taxes, how much did this new branding project cost? What industries are we looking to recruit? And what areas or industries are our priorities? Because he kept saying our priorities, our priorities. Well, that would be the Chamber of Commerce, KEDC, and 14 Forward, but not the city of Colleen's priorities necessarily, because survey says citizens don't want condos and strip malls, they want manufacturing. Seems like there's some co-mingling of money between KEDC, GKCC, and the private organization of what was once called 14 Forward. This eliminates all transparency. Survey says we don't have big manufacturing because land is being turned into residential or strip malls. Also, we aren't looking for it. All of the recruitment efforts shown seem to be in tech. How many transitioning soldiers off of Fort Hood, excuse me, Fort Hood, have a tech MOS? In 2022, the TURS allocated 14 million for economic development, public infrastructure reimbursements. Anthem Park is getting $12.75 million of that for public infrastructure. Is this the money that is making it so there's no money coming out of our budget? Why did Colleen hire consultants to study and develop projects? Shouldn't that be a cost for the developer to pay? Survey says this was 200 acres of manufacturing that we no longer have. Mayor, since I can direct comments to you directly, you only have one committee you appoint to or should influence. You haven't even filled that board, even though I know you had an appropriate and qualified applicant that is a resident. It's interesting that two individuals who application you couldn't find were mine and apparently Ricky Williams for the Audit Committee, two people who know what they're doing. Perhaps you should be more worried about appointing qualified people instead of friends or strangers who are not the people you dislike. Maybe then boards would have proper oversight and operations and people wouldn't be going to prison for years for lack of oversight. Regardless, the mayor shouldn't be giving or influencing any names. Survey says of all the foolish expenses this council has approved, you didn't account for life-saving equipment required for public safety. Over half of this money is just sitting on hold for a shelter that has an overinflated price tag. And survey says maybe we have saved enough money that the five or six cent rate could be used to keep the power on at park pavilions, improving quality of life and park experiences.
Counsel, do y'all have any comments? Well, before we go on break, I just want to correct several things that was misquoted. First of all, I don't have any residents in Colleen other than my daughter, and my daughter does not sit on any committee. Second of all, Colleen Housing Authority has zero to do with anyone on this council but me. That was the state mandated, mandate for me to appoint. I even asked Mr. Kegel in legal, could I get out of it? And they said, if you want out, you gotta go up there to the state and fight them for it, but that's a mandate for them, because I don't have a problem with not appointing, but I have to. Second of all, as long as I'm a council member, which I am, and if the city secretary say the whole council, which includes me, even though my title is mayor, I am a part of this council. So I do have input. I also have a say on committees. Now, let me break this down. As far as the police chief being in charge of the police department, they have the training and certification. Volunteers are great, but when it comes to what the police department need, only one person along with his selected team that come together and want to make a decision on what they need, as well as the Colleen Fire Department use their chiefs to make decisions on what they need to move our city forward to safety and the budget, as we do the budget. This is for the residents and the ones that knew, that are new. We're always doing amendment because stuff arises. And when that situation happened, correction, a police was not shot, the situation that particular time. And they say, hey, we need a robot dog. Once the police department make a decision on what they need, it is the council's responsibility to assist with that need, with the direction of our city manager that have all of the accolades to help us with that budget to stay within. And he has selected two amazing assistant city managers to help, to assist them with that. So we are moving with the requests from department heads that have all of the credentials, education, and certification to make a decision for their department and the need of this city. I may give an opinion, but that's just my opinion. Second of all, I have attended, because I am a member of the senior center, so I go there a lot, especially for when they have like different events. So I have can attest, with Mr. Murphy can attest, Councilwoman Solomon and Councilwoman Cobb has attended meetings. Why this is so important for me to tell you? When people throw things in the atmosphere and the ones that are not engaged with what's going, really going on in the city, they would take those things and attack simple people, the council, with just he say, she say. That is dangerous to waste your time attacking people instead of being a problem, a part of a solution. Continuing with correction, people going to prison or jail, those are personal decisions that they make. If the FBI found fault in anyone on this council, anyone on the staff, they would have said something by now. That is another vicious rumor, just to attack. One day, I'm hoping those attacks would stop and we would really get serious about, do we really care about the city? The other thing, KEDC, we have a great KEDC team way before this council or any of you may have moved here. That was already established, so we are a part of a team. With that KEDC being here, the first industrial park would have never happened. There would have been no play, any place here for a business to come to the city of Colleen. So if they're going to continue to invest their own money to store and we have the opportunity to utilize that service to bring in businesses here, if we have the land, rooftops is what move people. Councilmember Sagara has said that over and over. Councilmember Alvarez have said that, and Councilwoman Gonzalez. It's not like we have not tried to find a manufacturer here, but people have to choose to want to come to Colleen. But all this stuff that you see play out, that's not helping the situation. It's not helping at all. But we have to live with it, especially daily, but we have gotten used to it. The last thing I want to correct is TURS. TURS is only there for infrastructure. Let me explain that to you. You can either use, utilize TURS to purchase a building, to renovate a building, or to do infrastructure. So when we have all these entities put in place, the city manager, our legal team, they're a part of all of these entities that are there. And with TURS, what makes it so unique, Bell County, Bell County District Taxes, CTC, and Colleen, all of our taxes are together and they have representations on that same TURS board, so it's not just the council. We have other entities that in CTC, we have other entities that believe in the city of Colleen. Stay focused on me, that's a scare tactic, but I'm focused on you. We have other entities in the city of Colleen that are invested, and Bell County is a big player, that they entrust the TURS boards and entrust their tax dollars to ensure that this city grows. So I want to make those things clear. The city hall, this council, Councilmember Alvarez, gotta give him credit. He has constantly petitioned, this building is falling down. The staff has consistently say this building we are in right now is falling down. Mr. Kegel has raised the red flag on how much this historical building will cost to be renovated. They have had people to come in and check everything here, and the voters, we have to support their decision. When the bomb went on, the ballot for a new city hall, they voted it down. We don't have a problem with fixing this building that's old, but you just can't put anything in a historical building. It will cost you more. And Councilmember Alvarez broke it down so perfectly for the residents to understand, but they voted it down. And we, the council, have to accept that. Where are we going to get the funding for? Other than that, I have covered everything. And I thank you, residents, and especially the ones at home and are new that took the time to be here. Thank you. And counsel, thank you for all you do and continue to do to make this city a great place for everyone. We will now take a break. Please take your seats so we can start the meeting. Thank you. All right, counsel, let the record show all council members. Madam Secretary, thank you. We are on the consent agenda.
Just one moment, thank you. Consent agenda, MN 25028, RS 25182, RS 25183, RS 25184, and OR 25014. The caption of the ordinance reads, "Ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Colleen, Texas Limited Tax Notes, Series 2025, authorizing the levy of an ad valorem tax in support of the notes, approving an official statement and a paying agent registrar agreement, awarding the sale of the notes, and authorizing other matters related to the issuance of the notes."
Thank you. Councilmember Sagara, my, Franciscus, it's not working. Councilmember Sagara, can I get a motion to approve?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yes, I make move to approve or disapprove the consent agenda, because I have to say that now. Councilmember, Councilmember Segarra made a motion. Councilmember Solomon?
Second, ma'am.
Okay. All in favor, yes. Motion passes five to zero. Yes, ma'am. Oh, yes, ma'am. You're so kind. Thank you. All right, public hearing. Madam Secretary, whenever you read.
PH 25065. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately 1.39 acres, being Lot 3, Block 2, out of the Julius Alexander Industrial subdivision, from M1 Manufacturing District to R3A Multifamily Apartment Residential District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you. Counsel, Mrs. Messer has gone through the slides. Would you like for her to go back through? All right, public hearing is open. And this is PH-25-065. On this item, for number nine, Melissa Brown, you have three minutes.
This property was the victim of a really devastating fire for a lot of families. I know because I talked to almost all of them when they came over to pick up donations of clothes, household goods, bedding, basically everything they needed to restart their lives. The problem is, a lot of them had a hard time finding any place in Colleen to restart and rebuild those lives at the same affordable rate as these apartment complexes. I would normally be completely opposed to taking anything from industrial to multifamily housing or to housing or residential in general. But this residential is already there. It has been there. It has been a place of refuge for people who need that low-income housing, that affordable housing, something that survey shows the city of Colleen is desperately short on. So in this particular instance, I think it'll be about the only time you ever hear me come up and say that I support changing something from industrial to residential. Because this is one of those few places where we do have the existing structures, or at least what's left of them, and the places around them that makes it affordable for people to live and for families to be. It's not the fault of anyone else's that the city changed the ordinances that made it so that they can't rebuild after a fire. The fire wasn't the fault of the owners, the insurance, if they're willing to help pay for it, even if the owners are willing to invest their own capital into it. And why would we turn that away when clearly based on the fact that there are other apartments right around it, we're not going to be able to put industrial there anyway? So let's do the right thing for the citizens who need it and go ahead and approve this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Michael Fornino, you have three minutes.
With the expanded version of previous speaker justifying this, but my point is more our principle, just as I said, you folks can't help yourselves. It says, this was a city-initiated request. Manufacturing, housing, that's the only thing that comes out of this council. Hey, what can we do to build R1, R3, whatever? Residential, no businesses. The point makes itself over and over and over. I mean, during the break, it was discussed, well, we need to bring houses so the businesses are supposed to come in. Well, where are we supposed to put all these businesses manufacturing? On top of the houses? May I remind the council that this overgrowth of housing is exactly why Leander fired our city manager. Yet, that matches up with your agendas and many of your livelihoods. Let's build houses. We make money off of it. Comes down to a select few in this town, all chasing the same buck. And the citizens are left empty-handed, but you solve that by cutting off our hands, not letting us speak, not listening to us. That's, it's, it's a recurring cycle that just doesn't end, and it needs to.
Public hearing closed. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I move to approve this item as presented, but I did want to clarify that these existing multifamily residential buildings have been here at this site since 1977. So city council is not removing industrial land to put in apartments. These have been there since 1977. Thank you.
Councilmember Solomon?
I'll second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you read.
PH 25066. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately 1.477 acres out of the MT Martin Survey Abstract Number 963, from A Agricultural District to B3 Local Business District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you. Public hearing is open.
On you as well, sir. To quote the mayor, "Our comprehensive plan is so very important. It has the input from all of the public." And that's why it's so important that we stick to the 2040 comprehensive plan. Well, the comprehensive plan says that this area should be a neighborhood business district. This should not be a B3 district, which is much more intense. Actually, it's two levels more intense than neighborhood business. This is right next to Charles Patterson Middle School. B3 is going to bring more traffic than a neighborhood business district. It's going to bring more traffic into a congested area where there's already lines of parents that drop off and pick up their students. It doesn't do anything for safety. And again, the comprehensive plan is very important for us to follow. So why would we go against the comprehensive plan? And I'm having a hard time understanding how this fits perfectly in with a comprehensive plan when the use says neighborhood business district, not B3, not more intensive, not another gas station, not another Starbucks, not another restaurant, nothing like that. Neighborhood business, something that is going to bring in less traffic, still allow us to have an office space there, still be able to service people within that community, but not bring all the additional traffic right next to a school. That is, really, if you drive through there, not in a very safe area to have traffic zooming in and out and around for a highly utilized business. I would really request that we follow the mayor's advice and stick to the comprehensive plan. That's so important. We can replay that if you want to call me a liar again.
Thank you. Public hearing closed. Counsel, that's just-
Madam Mayor?
Anybody else?
The applicant-
I was getting ready to call that person.
Thank you.
I was. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Any comments on that before we move forward? That's my opinion, counsel. Take it, leave it. You represent the people. Would the applicant like to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Sir, please just say your name, please, for the record.
Peter Stenonik. First off, this has been, I'm just a regular citizen doing this zoning change. I don't have any consultants working for me doing it. And I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Hermosio and Ms. Lomis in the Planning and Zoning Department for helping me walk through the steps, being a novice at this. What I found doing it, though, was that the state just changed the sign requirements for the zoning change from what was a free sign handed out by the city to one that cost me $117 to have made. So if you have any influence in getting that changed, that would be great. I also found that your MTGO, when I was putting in my application to be able to print it, I had to sign up for PDF, which I ended up with a $103 bill for a year's subscription to PDF. I don't know why that is. Anyway, I talked myself out of it, or talked them out of it, got them to rescind it. Now, on the action itself, the opposition that I saw was that one person was the citizen who sold me the property, who recommended B1. Well, that's fine. He could have made it B1 while he owned it. And the traffic is not going to be very great as it's going to be a neighborhood hair salon without, of course, alcohol. Okay? We're not talking the nails and all that spa-type salon. And as was said earlier, all the plating and ingress and egress and all that would have to be done in the future. So those issues could be addressed. Pending any questions from you, oh, it is in accordance with the flu, and it fits the neighborhood character with the amount of B business district around there. So pending any questions from you, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, I do. What'd you say your last name was?
Stenonik.
And first name, sir?
Peter James.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Messer, I have a question for you. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for giving them an option from PDF to Word. Thank you. I think that's open to everyone if they ask for it. So that's something that the city do. Great job in customer service. Comprehensive plan, where do this fall in?
So the subject property is designated neighborhood commercial on the future land use map. So typically, there are two different future land use map classifications for commercial. There's the neighborhood commercial and the regional commercial. So generally speaking, B1 through about B3 is considered neighborhood commercial, and then B4 and B5 is typically your regional commercial. So in this case, staff does find that the request is consistent with the future land use map designation of neighborhood commercial because it's B3.
Which falls within the comprehensive plan.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's one of the things I just wanted you to say. The staff follows the comprehensive plan that's put in place. And thank you for that. That's all I wanted.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's important for the residents to know, the 2040 comprehensive plan, staff, they follow it. So that's important. All right, with that being said, public hearing closed. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to move to approve PH 25066 as presented.
Thank you. Councilmember, is there a second?
I second.
Councilmember Solomon seconded. All in favor, yes. Any comments?
That was Councilman Kendrick.
Okay. Well, I just saw your name. Was it you, Councilmember Kendrick?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Secretary, I only saw that and I barely heard. So I'm sorry, Councilmember Kendrick. I just looked at the name and it was Solomon. Correction, it was Councilmember Alvarez seconded by Councilmember Kendrick.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you read. Oh, one correction. Counsel, when you, PH-25-067 has been pulled from the agenda by the applicant. Just want to keep reminding you on that. I'm ready, Madam Secretary.
PH 25068. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately 0.230 acres, being Lots 10 through 11, Block 1, stringer addition, from B5 Business District to R3F Multifamily Residential District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is the applicant here? If so, would you like to speak? Okay. Public hearing open.
I wasn't here last meeting to be able to talk about the survey results, so I'm glad that it actually ties into this. Because according to the survey, one of the things that citizens say they want less of is more multifamily residential. It was one of the results. They don't want as much multifamily residential, much less building a lot more of it. It also said that there's not adequate opportunity for citizens to communicate with the council. And y'all don't listen to us, but that got blamed on the city manager. So in this case, what did the vast majority of the citizens who took the survey say that they don't want? This is an area that is surrounded by other things that are zoned B5. It's right along, just on the backside of Veterans Memorial, which should be actually something that we look towards since a lot of this is already legal nonconforming that's around there, that is zoned B5, even though it's got multifamily residential on it. And to be honest with you, if they really want to put multifamily there, they want to help a lot of different families, they would just build apartments. They would build anything with five units or more, because then we don't have to change the zoning according to the state law and the new city ordinance. So why limit it to a fourplex or a threeplex, squishing that into that area? It needs to be one or the other. Let's leave it business. So that way, when inevitably, the same thing that's happening along Ransier and other areas, and you know, this has not been a very well cared-for area either, when that starts getting redeveloped again, and you know, people from the city figure out that they can go in and buy it cheap, and they can start to gentrify it, well, now it's already business zoned. And anything along Veterans should really concentrate more on commercial and business than it does on residential anyway. So I would say leave it B5 and let them build more than threeplex or fourplex if that's what they so choose to do. But don't make the decision to take away the opportunity for commercial to be put there.
Thank you. Michael Fornino, you have three minutes.
Once again, you folks make my point for me. Abracadabra, let's build more houses. Get business there. I mean, the cost of living is going up around here, and the chances of making a living are going down. I mean, what is it with you folks? Everything's got to be converted into real estate that you can buy, sell, and trade amongst yourselves and your extended associates. That's what it comes down to. And before the mayor says, oh, that's a lie, to the folks at home, take the stock, how many folks here in front of me make their living in real estate or have real estate interests themselves? That is not a lie. And how long has that condition existed on this council, regardless of iteration? You do the smug look all you want, sir, you know I'm right. I mean, this just, it's a trend. This twice in a row, on your own agenda, you're making my point. Enough with the houses. Give people a place to work. Give people a place to earn a living. Give people a place to work, give people a place to earn a living outside of your control, outside of your purview, without your permission collectively or individually. Again, the city manager was fired from his previous job for this exact condition. Leander fired him, their chief complaint was too many houses, not enough businesses. Source, Austin Statesman Newspaper. Yeah, I know. I'm never going to forget that one, Mr. Kagle. You could try to give me the thousand-yard stare, but there's nothing you've done in your life that even comes close to having that thousand-yard stare that would even cause me to change my heartbeat one bit. Enough with the houses. Enough. We see that time after time after time after time. You can't think in any other direction. It's not working. Look at your own surveys. Look around the town. I shouldn't have to have a government dictating to me from the Communications Department what kind of town I live in, what the economy is, based on things like this. Economy is individual. People know what they can and can't afford, and they can't afford living here and spending money here to make your pipe dream of a downtown come true. Fact.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Council, can I get a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Kendrick, did you have a comment or anything before I go into requesting a motion? Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to make it perfectly clear. I'm here on the council. I do not own any real estate. I'm not in the real estate business. So I just want to put that out there that I don't own any real estate, or am I in the real estate business?
Thank you. But in all fairness, councilmembers Solomon, Councilwoman Cobb, and also myself, I'm not sure about Mayor Protem Adams, but if people have a job in real estate, they have to provide for their family. There's no crime against that. So I just don't want us to get caught up in, people gonna say what they want to say. This is just another attack. Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I wanted to move to approve PH 25-068 as presented, but also wanted to say that, you know, this piece of property has been zoned B5 and nobody's come here to develop a commercial business. It's a small, narrow, local residential street with a dead end. It's pretty obvious why no business has gone in there. And there's a multifamily unit almost identical to what's being proposed here right next door to it with a trailer park across the street. So if this is what the landowner wants, you know, I think it makes perfect sense. So we move to approve.
Councilmember, thank you. Councilmember Segar.
Mayor, before I second that, I'm going to second that motion, and I just want to...
Did you second it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, sir. Did you get that, Madam Secretary?
Second. Second, second. Can I say something else?
No, sir. We just needed it for our record. That's all. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to those speakers that just spoke. You know, as a real estate broker, I'm on their side. I mean, I think the less building that there is, the more money real estate people make. They got it backwards. You know, if you build too many houses, it's a matter of supply and demand. I wouldn't have to sell as many because when you got less houses, prices go up. And right now, you know, it's affordability. As he said, cost of living goes up when you're not building enough. And so there's a mixture there because they said cost of living is up. Well, you know, it's because we're not building enough, I guess. But like I say, as a broker, I love it. Stop building because that way prices go up, and then it's good for the city because when prices go up, people pay more taxes, you know? That's pretty much where revenue comes up. So I don't build houses. It's a matter of supply and demand, if you study supply and demand. So I just want to let them know, it's like, I'm for it. Let's stop building. No more. I'll be rich. Thank you.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries. And I also want to say something. Everybody will have a past. You can't change your past. But what Mr. Kagle has done for the city of Colleen is great and amazing things when it comes to our development, our planning and zoning, our working with Mrs. Mesher, and we did a great job, council, in hiring him. And Mr. Kagle, thank you for everything you have done when it comes to development and working with our planning and department, Ms. Mesher and her team, and ensuring that our city grow. But when it grows, staying with the comprehensive plan to ensure that the growth is controlled growth. And I think what Councilmember Alvarez said, and I commend him, unless you go out there, residents, and you see these areas before this council vote on it, you really won't understand the dynamics or how the makeup is that's in that area. To say, hey, good point, duplex is already over there. The park, the trailer park is already in place over there. So it's a dead-end road going up against Fort Hood. So unless you go out there and see it, you wouldn't understand it. And I thank you for pointing that out and staff out. You showed the pictures, but I think Councilmember Alvarez done an excellent job in breaking it down for people to understand. And as long as the residents understand, it's very important to me. And Mr. Kagle, you take a lot of hits, and I thank you for your professionalism and everything you have done to ensure that we're moving in the right direction. I could not omit, I defended every council member and my left hand, because I have a right hand, which is my Mayor Protem, but you're on the left, you do so much for us. So I had to thank you for that. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 25-069, the caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by amending the planned unit development for approximately 31.005 acres, being Lot 1, Block 1, final plat of 5100 Janel Phase 1A, Block 1, final plat of 5100 Janel Phase 2A, Lot 1, Block 1, final plat of 5100 Janel Phase 2B, and approximately 15.2 acres out of the Thomas Robinett Survey, abstract number 686, and a replat of Lot 1, Block 1, Elms Creek Edition, Phase 2, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you. Council didn't ask last time, but if you feel the need for Ms. Mesher to do the slides again, please jump in and just tell. Okay, thank you for that. Is the applicant here? Sir, how are you? State your name for the record, please.
Trey Simpson of Clark Associates.
Yes, sir.
I'm here representing the project. Plain and simple, your city staff did a great job explaining what we're trying to do here. We're trying to amend the planned unit development, which was already passed by your city council a little bit like a year and a half ago. Basically, the goal for us really is to bring in this anchor project. This would be our first commercial development in that portion of the planned unit development. And this planned business is planning on having a large patio area, lots of walkable access. It's exactly what you're looking for. If your future land use map is providing the services directly to the multifamily development that we're constructing behind it. So I think it's a great product for you guys. That's about all I have. If y'all have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Public hearing is open again. Michael Fernino, followed by Melissa Brown.
I withdraw this one.
Okay, sir, thank you. You have three minutes.
Thanks. Couple of procedural things, since you keep reminding us of it. First, it's not appropriate even for the mayor to go off agenda, talk about the city manager, who is not on the agenda this meeting, that was the last meeting, nor to go into a conversation off agenda in between votes. Also, once a person makes a motion, they need a second before they can go into the discussion about why they made that motion. So you're welcome for the pointers, Mayor. Whew, that's it. Thank goodness. I was afraid we would not have enough drive-through coffee places on Clear Creek. Another one. This is just exactly what we needed, isn't it? And with the other proposed change on this, it would allow for, oh, right, the size of another dollar store. The increased square footage on the maximum would be just about enough to allow for another dollar store to be built. What happens when we add a drive-through? Anything? More cars are coming in and out. There are more cars are driving through. There's more traffic turning in and out because, let's face it, we're a society who we can make everything as walkable as we want to. Most people would rather get in their car and go do whatever it is they're doing, particularly in Texas weather when it's summertime and it's hot out, in the wintertime when we have winter storm fury, or something similar to that. So what does this mean for traffic in that area? That's also fairly close to a bunch of other drive-through businesses coming and going on the other side of the road. And I don't know how many of you drive down Clear Creek. Clearly, the mayor hasn't driven down Avenue I, but hopefully you drive down Clear Creek to see how hard it is to already turn left in and out of any one of those strip mall areas, and the number of near accidents that there are. Will this require a new TIA? If the intention is to put in a drive-through anything, will it require a new TIA? Or is this going to be another thing that comes up after the fact? We realize there's a traffic issue there now because we've got drive-throughs on both the north and the south side of Clear Creek, with everybody trying to converge in that center turn lane, which in the northeast we call a suicide lane for a reason. If not, what we're going to end up happening is another situation like we have at Rosewood, like we have now that we already have the approval and stuff had started being constructed at Anthem Park. Now we have to go back through and make all the changes before anything can be built. So let's look at that ahead of time. But I don't think we need another drive-through coffee shop, nor do we need another dollar store. Leave it the way it is, please. I had, I said I have four seconds when you banged that gavel. I watched it hit zero.
Question, please.
Where is that?
Okay. And is the applicant still here? Sir, I have a question for you two. Ms. Mesher, maybe it's me, and I know we went over the 2040 comprehensive plan a lot, and I know council have Mr. Kagle, and we have read and made corrections before I signed my name to it. Walkability, is that not what was in the, and maybe I read it wrong, is that not in the comprehensive plan where the resident gave their input that they wanted a whole neighborhood with everything in walking distance, too?
Yes, ma'am.
So is this project within the 2040 comprehensive plan?
Yes, ma'am, to your point earlier this evening. This particular PUD is, it does a lot of things that the comprehensive plan talks about. It's walkable, it's mixed-use, it has higher density than we typically see. So yes, it comports with the comprehensive plan, to answer your question.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you so much. Sir, thank you so much. I have a quick question. With this project that the council, thank you for coming back, the council weighed in on it, and it's been going on for a while, it's just not started. First of all, I appreciate making the building smaller and conducing everything because it was really kind of big, but it worked. Is that, in that area, would that be, and I go there, my daughter lives over there, so I travel and I go on Fort Hood a lot, so I do do that a lot on that area. But I don't foresee a dollar store being over there.
I don't know of any plans for a dollar store.
Yes, sir, with the caliber of homes that you're getting ready to build in that area.
Yeah. I don't know of any plans for a dollar store. I know that the future retail, the interest that we have seen lately has been for an exercise center, has been for small retail shops. We have not had plans for a dollar store.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make that correction. Okay. With that being said, thank you, sir. With that being said, public hearing, if I didn't, is closed. Can I get a motion, Councilmember Alvarez, in a second, to approve or disapprove?
Moving to approve PH 25-069 as presented.
Councilmember Solomon?
I second it, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All in favor, yes. Motion carries five to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 25-070, the caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the corporate city limits of the City of Colleen, Bell County, Texas, to disannex approximately 126.71 acres of land, including Lots 1 and 2, Block 1, out of Live Oak Acres, and the remainder out of the James H. Evitz survey. Abstract number 287, declaring said land to no longer be a part of said city, declaring said land and present and future inhabitants of said land to not be entitled to any of the rights and privileges of citizens of the city, and to not be bound by the acts and ordinance of the city, ordinances of the city, excuse me. Providing for severability clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for a savings clause, providing an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, are there any questions before we dig into this item for Mrs. Mesher? Slides or anything? Okay. All right. With that being said, is the applicant here? And you also, we just received, it's a lot of information, I'm not even sure if y'all can get through it. It's a lot. You received a package. Good, what time is it? Good evening, sir. Could you please state your name?
Hi, my name's Dylan Wise, I'm with WPW Development.
Okay, sir, you look a little different. Okay.
Yeah, sorry for giving you all the presentation so late. We had a lot of technical difficulties this morning in our office, so apologize for that.
Yes, sir.
So I guess, yeah, with WPW Development, we are the petitioner for disannexation of three parcels. I guess one of them was a parcel that we purchased that was annexed as part of a larger area in 2000, I guess 2007, 2008. That area went from this parcel pretty much all the way to Salida. I think it was like over three mile, it was three square miles were the properties. The second two parcels, we actually voluntarily annexed in 2019. Both of these annexations included a service plan that carried the promised water, sewer, and other city services. At that time, the 2012 Water and Wastewater Master Plan was still in effect, and there were CIPs extending through that area to provide services. More specifically, I guess, Project 29W on the 2012 Water, Wastewater Master Plan to extend water along the east side of the property, and 30S to extend sewer along, or sewer through the property. Recently, the City of Colleen passed the 2024 Water and Wastewater Master Plan. That plan doesn't show any services south of Chaparral except for Turnbull Ranch. As part of the plan for future services when these parcels are annexed, the city agreed to proceed in good faith with extending services to the parcels in city limits south of Chaparral Road. And this, these groups of parcels don't just include, there's two different service plans. It doesn't include just raw land. There were also people that lived out there that were encompassed in annex that were all promised services. It wasn't necessarily immediate, but it was, over time, the city was committing to providing services to those annexed areas. So is there a comparable level of service? The city agreed to provide gravity sewer service and water to the annexed parcels in annexation service plan. I think specifically it said within 1,000 feet of the property boundary, or within 1,000 feet of that area. So there is no area that's gravity sewerable on either one of these parcels within 1,000 feet. I think in that service plan, it even said that there is no capacity for wastewater. So we've... So we've, us at WPW Development have had discussions over the last two years about building residential neighborhood. So this is part of a larger group of parcels. We have a total of 400 acres out there, part of it's in the city limits, which are these three parcels we're talking about, and a couple that are outside of that. The Colleen's comprehensive plan does show this area as residential, so the character of the development we have planned will need rate base sewer and water services from the So what's, what's our plan? WPW Development has been in discussions with city staff about extending services in the area south of Colleen, and we've come to some sort of agreement on...
Sir, I'm not sure. It's, I apologize. Do he only get three minutes? Because Councilman Segaro just brought to my attention, you went over. So do he only get three minutes, city attorney?
Per the governing standards, the applicant has initially three minutes. The council can ask questions of the applicant, and the applicant also, per the governing standards, has an opportunity to speak. You may give the applicant opportunity to speak after the, the public hearing to answer any questions or to give closing argument.
Okay, thank you. Sir, would you like an extra minute? Because you...
Yeah, I'll try and go through it as quick because I can't if you hold on.
Could you ask the council for an extra minute?
Can I get an extra minute, please?
Counsel?
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Secretary?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've been working with, with city staff on, on a plan to extend those services through, similar to what the 2012 Water, Wastewater Master Plan had planned whenever we were promised that with annexation. We've not necessarily agreed on everything, but what we've offered was to build the services out to that area. And right now, we're kind of at a little bit of an impasse to where we either need to know that we can get services and we can build that infrastructure like was planned back in 2012, whenever these properties were annexed, and whenever we voluntarily annexed, or we had to find other ways to serve the property through disannexation. So what's the benefit to the city? The city gains a lot from this, so what we are planning on doing is making an efficient subdivision, making efficient utilities, and agreeing to bring the services out there at our cost. We, we do want some compensation for that, just because we're building a CIP like was originally planned for that area, but it does end up being...
Sir, I brought to my attention, you went over your time. Your one minute is over. Okay. Thank you, sir. Is, is there, okay, sir, you say we have a question. Councilmember Segaro?
You said you were having conversations with the city, and I think, looking at this, the recommendation is for us as council from the staff to disapprove the disannexation. So looking at the staff's recommendation, I think maybe there's a possibility that, you know, in the future, you know, there's some kind of negotiation here, something that can be done. I'm not sure if that's, you know, was part of any of those conversations, but do you, did you have these conversations with staff that maybe in the future something can be done?
Yeah, yeah, I think that we can come to an agreement eventually. We just kind of need direction that this is the route that the city would want to go. And that's really what we're looking for with the, the sanction petition. It's either, are we going to build infrastructure south of Chaparral to be able to serve development or future development and start building that system out? Or are we going to have to go as private developers and seek alternatives? We don't want to do the latter of that. We'd rather go through the city, we'd rather, you know, conform with the city and continue to grow Colleen. But we, we're at the point now, and especially since we bought these properties so long ago, that we have to do something.
Yeah, and, and I'm in agreement with the staff's recommendations, you know, we do, but I just want to make sure that, you know, if, if we approve this, that there is some conversation here in the future with the staff and come to some kind of agreement, come back to council and, you know, with a plan or something. Because this is something that it's long-term. This is, how, how long before all of this is, is taking effect, you start doing things out there?
Yeah, I mean, from, I mean, even if we started today, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't really be, start building for another couple of years in this project. It's relatively large, but this whole area that would be serviced through this would be, you know, 10, 15, 20-year project. It's really just creating that foundation to where we have a longer-term plan south of Chaparral Road. And part of our discussions have been upsizing for the city and being able to provide extra capacity for development even 50 years from now.
Well, and the reason is, and, and I'm glad that the staff is recommending for us not to accept it, but the reason, you know, we don't want to go through what we went through the other, you know, we don't want to see other muds and our citizens to go through all that stuff, so.
Yeah.
But when you said other options, I'm, I'm assuming, I know you didn't say that, but I'm assuming that's one of those options there, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
It's not so much a question for the applicant, but Mr. Cagle, is this appropriate time or should I wait until it's closed?
The public hearing hasn't started.
Thank you very much. I'll hold my question, madam.
Okay. What was the question? We couldn't hear it down here.
It was for Mr. Cagle. I was asking if it was appropriate to ask Mr. Cagle a question regarding this, but she said to wait until a public hearing was closed.
What? I'm sorry.
My question is for Mr. Cagle, not necessarily the applicant.
Yeah, you can ask the question to Mr. Cagle. I was just saying, you said something about a public hearing, and we aren't actually in the public hearing yet.
Very good. Okay, so I can ask the question to Mr. Cagle. So the, if we disapprove, if we move to disapprove according to the city's recommendation, because I do have some other questions that I would like to get some clarity on regarding, especially understanding what's happening with our tax, tax issues, taxation concerns that we have now and then future forward. If we disapprove this, to Mr. Segaro's point, are they able to bring it back future, after future conversations, or how would that work?
Well, I think if they were to bring something back, it would be the same thing to de-annex, but, so...
And my concerns might not be legitimate, so I don't know. But like, some of my concerns would be regarding our tax, the, the concerns we have regarding our disabled veterans tax exemption and project the size. I've got lots of other questions related to this project in particular. So if they, if we disapprove it today, would they be able to bring it back for future discussion? Meaning that I would have time to ask my questions about my concerns.
Yes, ma'am. And we, as the applicant said, we've been talking about this for a couple of years, and we, we've done the analysis on their, on their development, on the general fund side, on the property tax side, and it, it meets all of, or exceeds our criteria.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Sir, I, I might call you back up again, but I'm gonna wait till we get through the public hearing, because I have several questions for staff, also for you two. All right? If you're on my, okay, thank you. Okay. Public hearing is open. Melissa Brown, you have three minutes.
Go ahead and put today on your calendar and mark it down as the day that Melissa Brown agreed with Bruce Whitis. The city has failed to meet its promises and its obligations in the southern part of the city, particularly in between Sage Coach and Chaparral and that entire general area. How many times have residents of the Donut Hole come up with the exact same concerns? The city promised us sewer, we don't have sewer. The city promised us sidewalks, we don't have sidewalks. The city promised us this CIP, it has never happened. In fact, the improvements don't come, except for when you think about properties that were more recently annexed that are coming into the city with the promise of full water and sewer services, saying that, oh, it's, it's really easy, it's right there, we have no problems. Or when Mr. Perser had voluntarily annexed in the rest of Heritage Oaks, which wasn't even really in our ETJ because it had just been disannexed from Harker Heights ETJ and never really adopted into ours. But he got full services. The fact is that during the presentation and in the staff report, the staff said that the city isn't required to provide sewer services to this property because when you compare it to similar-sized lots, similar-sized areas out in that same general region, they are receiving the same services as those properties are. And we don't have the money to change that anytime soon. If we want to take the money and put it into putting gravity sewer there for them, then that better go to all of the residents of the Donut Hole, first of all. But second of all, what project are we taking that money away from? Yeah, Councilman Segaro, I agree that there will always be an opportunity to bring it back and talk about it in the future, but bringing it back and talking about it in the future is something that has been promised over and over and over again in the future, never quite gets here to where the promises are fulfilled. That actually sometime in the future is what has been promised to most people for almost two decades now, out in that same part of the city of Colleen. Could he come back? Of course, they can come back anytime with the same request, but he has to pay again for the application fee. And then, not only that, this is why going to every other week was a horrible idea, and trying to make those decisions on the same night. Because in the past, you would have heard it last week, had an entire week to consider and ask questions, vote on it this week. Your other option, if you're not comfortable making the vote, you're not required to say yes or no today. You can always vote to table it. As long as you've had the public hearing today, you can still post, technically, you would make a motion to postpone it to the next meeting, but you could make the motion to postpone since you had the public hearing on the advertised date. That is another viable option, but have all of the facts, have all of your questions.
Thank you, your time is up.
May I finish my sentence, please, counsel?
Your time is up, counsel. Does she want an additional minute? Yes or no, Councilmember Alvarez? Ca, coun, coun... That's three out of two. Thank you, your time is up. Michael Fanino, you have three minutes, sir.
This is going to be a lot of doubling down on what the previous speaker had to say, but the city does not have the best track record, promises and good faith intentions. Again, the Donut Hole, you say, same with any other standard plan, infrastructure. I don't live too far from Water Crest Road, there's another example. That was supposed to have a, a budget, a timeframe. That's sadly behind. So I would say, just approve the man's petition. Let him divorce himself rightfully from the city. I mean, what, what is the city gaining from him? I mean, he, he's done all his part. For how long? What's the city done? Nothing. I mean, I think, at this point, in a fair business deal, if we just want to look at this as straight-up business, the applicant has more than fulfilled their obligation, and the city has provided nothing but promises. Oh, we'll look at that later. Oh, we'll consider that, maybe sometime in the future. Christmas is coming, so is the next nice age. For once, take your egos out of the equation, just be fair. Be fair, be just, and be considerate. Man has more than laid out his case, and there's dozens and dozens of similar situations in this city, but he, he couldn't make the point any better than anybody else because he's affected. He's not getting anything back from the city, the Donut Hole comparatively. What are they getting? It's, it's practically a mirror situation, or a carbon copy situation. Just disannex them. There's, there's nothing to gain by the city, because the city is not providing them anything. He's bearing all the load, and the city could just throw out promises, promises, promises. Do the right thing, approve it.
Thank you. Mr. Halford Dudley? Yes, sir. Good evening, sir. You have three minutes. Did I pronounce your name right? Because, sir...
D U D L E Y. I live next to the WD, WBW properties, okay? And I was annexed in 2008 forcibly, okay? We have nothing from the city. I've lived out there now, eh, just over 20 years, and I have yet to see a clean policeman. Now, we don't have any crime, but I've yet to see a clean policeman. When we have non-emergency actions, we get the county police. When I've had stray animals, when the war first started, we had a lot of animals dropped off out there where we're at. We couldn't get the city to come. The county came. We do get fire. We have had, we had a fire out there, and we do get fire. But as a general rule, we don't see anything out of the city except the tax bill. In the last, what, 17 years? That's all I've seen. And one statement that concerns me a lot is a statement that because we live on, with septic systems, that's an equal thing to the city's sanitary sewer. And I would submit that that's probably not correct. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Sir, I just... Sir, hi. I just have a quick question. You said you live on the septic system. Were you ever offered to tie into the city? Water line for sewer, anything? Okay.
No. There is, as Mr. Whitis has said, there's nothing, no city sewer or city water that extends to the south of Chaparral Road.
Okay.
Okay? There is that nice 16-inch water line that runs right under our driveway, or the entrance to our road.
Yes, sir. Your driveway?
Our, we have a private road...
Okay.
That runs about a mile back.
Yes, sir.
Okay? That, we have a nice, that's a nice 16-inch water line. That's as close as it gets.
Yes, sir.
I use West Bell Water. Most everybody else uses a well. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mrs. Mesher, I have some questions for you. Oh, counsel, does anyone have questions before I get started? I do it in public hearing, because when we come out, we vote. Councilmember Solomon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I want to ask...
But counsel, if y'all want me to close public hearing, we can. That's up to you. Okay. I'm sorry. Public hearing closed. Okay. Councilmember Solomon?
I want to ask the applicant, um...
Okay. Okay, you want to ask the applicant?
Could we?
Okay, yes, sir. Mrs. Mesher, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We got it. Yeah, I apologize.
You know, the staff has, you know, again, the staff has recommended that we, you know, disapprove this, and then you indicated that you were, you know, willing to, really get this resolved. And, and I believe the city is, is, is willing to get that resolved, and so, what is stopping y'all to, you know, come together? And I know this has got to be some type of compromise, but, I mean, this is a beautiful layout, beautiful plot, and, and we would love to see it, you know, flourish. So what would stop, what would be the indicator for coming together? I mean, do you see any opening and reasoning?
Yeah, I think that there's, there's an agreement that we can come to. Really, we're looking for direction from council to put it back on the CIP, or figure out how we can get those services out to that region, and what we can do to work together with the city to be able, we, I mean, we're offering to build the infrastructure out there, and that, that would bring the services to the existing residents out there and to our development as well, and start, you know, completing what was planned back in 2012. And that's really what we're looking for, and, yeah.
But the city is willing to, 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 to meet you halfway in, in order to, you would have to begin building, is that correct? I mean, I'm not the expert here, but I can ask Mrs. Wallace, Wallace, you would have to begin developing before they could really give the services. Is that correct?
Typically, we would enter into a development agreement to bring services out to the area. It just depends on what exactly, you know, the scope of those services are, what the city wants to go, wants to do in the future, and how it all looks like. I mean, we have a plan of what we would like to do, but currently, I mean, there's no plan for any infrastructure to go out there, and there's nothing on the Water, Wastewater Master Plan to bring services out there, so we would have to add that back or figure out how we can have a more effective plan for that area.
Okay. All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Mr. Cagle, counsel, right now, we're really putting staff and Mr. Whitis under the gun, because I really think we should table this for now. Let them have the opportunity, I, I know you next, you don't have to do this, I'm just giving... I'm just giving, I am gonna call on you, sir. We don't have to make no motion or anything, but I just wanted to say, the questions you asking, they really don't have the answers for it right now because-
We have answers.
Yes, sir. That's not where I was going because that's what I don't want to go really ed backwards and forward. I just don't want to see that play out here because we already been here and done it, and it just don't turn out right. But I'm gonna call you, Councilmember Kendrick, and then you, Councilmember Segura, and then I'm gonna make my comment. So please, because we're gonna ask them why they can't work together, why they can't do this. Okay, yes, and they're gonna tell you, and I think Ms. Messer did a good job in explaining that, but your chance, Mr. Kendrick.
Madam Mayor, I would like to move to disapprove PH 25070 and ask that the applicant reevaluate options with the staff so we could all relook at this same, pretty much the same thing what you just said, to where we go back to try to figure out a way of making this happen.
Councilmember Solomon.
Second.
Okay, let's get back in. Are you finished or we can go on discussion?
Yes, I'm finished.
Councilmember Segura.
Before I start, I just want to get clarification because the motion is to disapprove the annexation. So are you saying disapprove the motion or approve the motion of disapproval?
He disapproved what the staff said. I think I understood you clearly. They want to not do it.
No, no, no. Staff is asking for disapproval.
And you're okay with that?
Yes.
And let's come back to the topic.
I got it, I got it.
Okay. So you're agreeing with staff?
Yeah, that's okay. That's what I wanted to clarify.
Okay.
And so, thank you for that. But what I want, and that's, I'm okay with the motion, but I know that the city manager, he said that you met the requirements, you got, you know, we want to see the numbers and stuff like that. We don't have anything right now, so there's really nothing to go off by. So, you know, I'm okay with the staff's recommendation, but come back and the city manager seems to have the handle on it. If he's already said he's got the numbers, he knows what it's gonna look, how much money is gonna come to the city versus how much is it gonna cost us? That's what we really need to look at, and so we can give the staff, you know, better direction as to what we're gonna do. Is that okay?
Yes.
Councilmember Alvarez and then Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that, you know, we keep talking about these different service plans, annexation 2012, I don't know, 17, these different dates have been thrown out. I think one of the major differences or one of the big things that changed in those years was the state took away cities' abilities to involuntary annex, and I think that's probably what affected what you saw in those, in those water and wastewater capital improvement plans. It certainly would change my view. You know, at that time, when the city made the 2012 plan that you're referring to, you know, they thought that they could still grow at their own pace. So it probably made sense to extend infrastructure out there because we know we can go out there and annex it as we're putting in the infrastructure. Well, that changed in 2019 or 17, it started, and then 19, they kind of solidified it. You know, I think, I think the project is a good project. I think my personal issue with it is you're asking for the city to come in and put in millions of dollars in infrastructure for essentially your project. In the future, it could be the oversizing would benefit potentially other projects, but here in the next 10, 15 years, it's for your project, and we don't do that for any other development in the city. So for me, I would have to see something above and beyond in return for the taxpayers if we're gonna use taxpayer money to extend infrastructure to benefit your development for the next, you know, decade and decade and a half. You know, it has to be that balance, and same thing when we talk about tax abatement agreements, 380 agreements with commercial developments. They're getting, we're getting something to offset what they're getting is the way that I look at it. And so obviously, yes, we're gonna get property tax revenue, we're gonna get ratepayers, but we get that in every other subdivision that's not asking what you're asking for. So I think there's a way for us to hopefully come together and connect those dots and make it make sense. So I do thank Councilmember Kendrick for, you know, saying that to hopefully you guys go back to staff and we're able to figure out a way to kind of make this work for everybody and make it make sense because, you know, I do think it's a good project. I just, I wouldn't support disannexation of any property, especially now that the city can no longer annex whatever it wants. So we're essentially, you know, hamstringing ourselves if we were to do that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, as far as like the services go in that area and what, how the city can entice developers to come is really kind of do the opposite of that. I mean, a lot of other cities will do CIPs and will do extensive CIPs. And if you look at what the prior water wastewater master plan, that one from 2012, y'all had sewer and water going down 2484 almost to Selayo, and that's part of the reason why y'all annexed everything over there because you did have a plan going that far. And for us as developers, we come in, we see, you know, there's a plan for growth, there's a plan for efficient growth. That way, we're not having to piecemeal a bunch of parcels together, piecemeal utilities together, lift stations, have decommissioned. It ends up costing the city a ton of money, especially having to upsize after the fact ends up costing millions and millions of dollars. And what we're asking for, our total project is less than 30% I think of the total sewer real area once this is built out. So it's, that's part of the reason why we're asking for the city to work with us on this project specifically is because we're bringing water sewer out to existing, existing citizens in Colleen and to future citizens. So there's other parcels out there that could connect into this water sewer, but they're gonna have to annex in the city, Colleen, do the same thing that we're trying to do right now. But we're building all the infrastructure out there as part of, you know, what was previously shown on that 2012 wastewater master plan. And I think it's a really big value for the city because if we do all of this now, I mean, there's been a lot of times where you come back and these CIPs end up costing 10 times more just because we waited for this or, you know, this didn't happen, so we had to come back and upsize. And if you look at all of the CIPs now, it's, we're going back to upsize for new development, but it's costing $6, $7 million. And I'm trying to stop that. I'm trying to say, I want development to happen in that area for the next 10, 20, 30 years, and how can we keep that going for 50 more years?
Okay. Councilwoman Gonzalez, I mean, we still got this.
Thank you. I just want to make sure for clarity that basically that you as the applicant were in agreement because you said that initially you gave us the option of approving and disapproving and disannexing. You really said you didn't want to do the latter. So if we were to vote to support having, disapproving and having another conversation, is that something that you as an applicant in your perspective would be in favor of?
Yes.
Continuing the conversation? I just want to make sure I hear that for the record. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we're open to continuing the conversation and how we can continue to build in that area and extend services, but we need to know if there is a plan to do that or not. And that's really the whole point behind the petition.
Right on, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kegel, it's your time. Anything? Yeah. All right, going back to you, Councilmember Kendrick. You made the motion to approve it, that this is approved with the caveat, no, okay, Ramon saying no, I mean, Councilmember Alvarez saying no. Could you state your motion, please? I thought it was disapproved it. That's what, correct? That's what I heard.
Disapproved, but I thought you just said approve. I think that's what we heard.
No, no, Councilmember Segura said that. So what has happened? Wait a minute, please. That's, please wait, let's clarify this. What has happened? I understand what he want to happen. So he wants to disapprove, that's what you said, but that's not what you want. He want to disapprove the, what the, this right here, particular item that the staff recommended, but what he wants to say, he approve, sir? That's what I'm trying to get clarity. What Segura is trying to say, no, he wants it to happen, but he want them to work together, and that's what you heard us, Madam City Attorney, talking about.
The motion I had written down was to disapprove the requested, the petition, to disapprove the disannexation and then to ask staff to continue to discuss further options with the petitioner.
Okay. Did you get that, Councilmember Segura?
Yeah, so that's, just to clarify, the vote is if you're with a motion, you're voting in favor of that, right?
If you're voting in favor of the disapproval, then, and there's a majority of you that vote in favor of this motion, then it would be disapproving the petition.
The petition, which is the staff recommendation.
To annex. So there would be no disannexation if this motion went through.
Okay, yes, ma'am. So both of y'all saying it the same thing? Like I was trying to say, table to get a clear understanding, but he just came and just said it. But both of y'all saying the same thing. You just saying it different, and that's what's throwing everybody off. Okay, okay, got it. Do the rest of you have it? Crystal?
Crystal.
A few good men. I like this. All right. So, sir, Councilmember Alvarez, this is why I called you up there. Councilmember Alvarez stated a point that most time that the infrastruktur, infrastructure is done by the developer. But what I got from my notes, and I just want to go by what you say before I say anything else. On the fourth page, the fifth page, for whatever reason, you said CIP, and that's installing the infrastructure with no long-term plan leads to inefficient growth that will cost the city more in the long term. Where is this CIP coming from?
So there was a previous CIP under the 2012 water wastewater master plan, and it was-
By the former city manager of the council?
Well, up until the most recent one passed just a year ago, some, you know, five, six years after we had annexed, voluntarily annexed one parcel, it was removed then, as far as I know.
So it's been removed?
Yes. Yeah, there's no plans out there to extend infrastructure, and that's what I was saying is that when you have CIPs that extend out, it gives us as developers a plan to say, you know, this is where we can build infrastructure, this is how we can build it, this is where we can count on infrastructure to be. But if there is no plan, it just ends up being piecemealed together, and that's whenever you get inefficient systems, you get undersized lines, you get, you know, there's a lot of problems that end up costing the city tons of money in the future. And if you look at your CIPs now, a lot of them are rehabilitation or expansion, and it's costing, you know, tens of millions of dollars now. So we're trying to stop that from happening and increasing capacity to where, you know, we know that we can have the next 50 years of growth coming through this area.
Okay. And my last question was, because the council already, they're gonna go that direction, but I just like clarity. When people say stuff, I like to understand. I just don't move that way. My next question was, you made the statement that, that you don't mind doing the infrastructure, but you feel like the city should compensate you something.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Okay. But you wouldn't have anything to connect on, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Well, right now, so our plan would be to build all of the infrastructure going all the way to the wastewater treatment plant. It's kind of hard to explain some of this without the map there.
No, no, sir, I understood it. We, I talked to Mr. Kegel and staff, and then I heard what you said. Because what I'm trying to get to, the council is saying, go back and have this conversation, but if the city, and Mr. Kegel, correct me, if right now, Councilmember Alvarez is so on point, if the city is not ready to develop right now, and that could be 10 to 15 years, which you stated, what my notes I wrote, that this is a 10, 15, 20-year project, correct, sir?
To final build out, yes.
Okay, yes, sir.
For our section.
So, Mr. Kegel, we don't have any intent in developing over there for a while. Am I, is that correct to say?
Well, the city doesn't develop. I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, if they develop, we're gonna have to run a line to connect to them. Am I the water line? Is that what you're saying? Are you gonna build all the way out to us?
Yes, that's what we're, what we're wanting to do is to extend services for the city of Colleen. We're agreeing to upsize, we're agreeing to construct it, we just want compensation for doing all that work. Traditionally, in the city of Colleen, what's happened in the past was, city of Colleen would build infrastructure, and then we would go out and connect if it was already there. What we're saying is that there's nothing there. We're going directly to that water, or the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
And you can see that with that 2012 wastewater master plan because there's lift stations dotted all around, all the way to Selayo, that would have, that we would have been able to tie onto traditionally, but now all of that's not planned, so it's a huge cost for us to be able to build that infrastructure. And if we ended up just doing it for just our development, it's gonna end up costing the city a lot of money to rehab those, to expand everything and be able to accommodate future growth. Because like I said, we're immediately for this immediately serviceable area, we're 30% of it.
Okay.
So once all of this is built out, there's significantly more development that we don't actually own.
And y'all have had these conversations over and over again?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I think that we're getting close to coming to an agreement, it's just a little bit of a difference.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Mr. Kegel? Nope, you don't have anything?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right. All right, with that being said, council, you don't have anything else? We already have a motion and a second. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. And Madam City Attorney, the motion has been passed to 5 to 0. And Mr. Kendrick, Councilmember Kendrick, you made the statement, you want them to sit down and continue this conversation. Do you want this to come back to us in any kind of way?
The numbers.
Oh, thank you, sir. Thank you.
We want all of the numbers to come back, so we have a clear-cut understanding of the numbers.
And when you say I heard Councilmember Segura talk, I don't understand who numbers, their numbers, the city numbers?
Well, when they sit down together, it should be, what's gonna be cost-effective and whether or not we're gonna find a way to make this here work. So that's gonna be numbers that's dealing with all of that.
So the city is not in the business, that's why I was trying to make that point, but the motion was to sit down and talk.
Right.
The city is not in the business of infrastructure. We don't do it. We don't do that. That's what Councilmember Alvarez was trying to stress. Anything built would be on them. So if, so that's what, Mr. Kegel, am I, did I understand you correct that you?
No, we were.
No, no, no. He still gotta say what he wants back. That's he said they need to meet, and I'm trying to understand.
No.
Okay. So Councilmember Segura spoke for you, so we're just gonna move on. Madam Secretary. Well, he spoke for you.
DS 25053, update regarding Anthem Park located on Stan Schluter MLK Drive.
Yes, ma'am. All right. As the city secretary said, this is an update on Anthem Park. Some of the background, in March of '23, the council approved a 203-acre planned unit development for Anthem Park. At full build-out, this mixed-use development will include approximately 38 acres of commercial and retail, 90 acres of multifamily, 60 acres of build-to-rent residential, and nine acres of office and flex. The development also contemplates a spine road to be known as Anthem Boulevard. And you can see this is to the north here, and so in the development that you see there now, none of that exists right now. The developer will have to build a number of driveway entrances and to construct Anthem Park Boulevard. This is a smaller portion of the layout that just shows some of the commercial. Also, in April of '23, the city council approved a TERS reimbursement agreement with CSW, and this agreement will provide for reimbursement to the developer for costs associated with the public infrastructure in an amount not to exceed $12.7 million. And the vast majority of that infrastructure is Anthem Boulevard. They've already put in some utilities and some access to 2410 and a traffic signal. um, some access to 2410 and a traffic signal. There we go. Um, the projected property value of the project at full buildout is about $534 million and property and sales tax revenues approximately $7 million a year at full buildout. Oops. There we go. And as everybody knows, Dave and Buster's has already opened, had the grand opening in May of 2025. Also, in associated with Anthem Park, in, in order to continue to develop that land in proximity to Skylark Field, we have to move the automated weather observation system. And it's currently awaiting some FAA coordination and approval. Um, now, this is the complicated part. Anthem Park falls between and takes access to a number of Tech Dot roadways, FM 2410, East Veterans Memorial Boulevard, East Stan Schleuder Loop. And so the same thing that we would have done if this had no Tech Dot, uh, roadways around it, we would have required a traffic impact analysis just like Tech Dot did and to evaluate the impact of this development on the roadways. The TIA, although it's not complete, it's in progress, determined that there's gonna be off-site improvements that are needed as a result of the added traffic. The study shows that improvements were needed at several intersections that included I-14 at Stan Schleuder, I-14 in Rosewood, Scott and White Drive at MLK, Rio Boulevard and East Veterans and all proposed driveways for the development. Hmm. There we go. And to help address and plan for the improvements, staff have been assisting the developer with coordination with Tech Dot and specifically addressing the intersection with Stan Schleuder, which has the most complicated solutions. Uh, upon Tech Dot's recommendation, we've contracted with Structure Point Consultants to study, actually, alternative intersection designs at Stan Schleuder because the, there's not enough room left underneath, uh, I-14 at Stan Schleuder to add lanes without removing, destroying the intersection, moving the interstate back, which would be an incredibly expensive proposition. Um, so, so we're looking for alternate, uh, intersection designs that can move traffic just as efficiently as having to rebuild the intersection. Um, so here you can see the intersections being studied at Stan Schleuder. You see, it's not just Stan Schleuder and I-14. There's each, each side of the interstate and Stan Schleuder in 2410. So when we have a large traffic generator at, at Anthem Park, it's gonna require, uh, some improvements. And we're working with Tech Dot and the developer right now to, um, to make, to figure out how to deal with these improvements. Now, the commercial development plans that I showed you, Tech Dot has already approved. If he, if he could build those today, they're gonna get access. So we're not holding up any, Tech Dot is not holding up any, uh, commercial development, um, with these requirements. And these are good requirements because already a couple of these intersections are at Level F. They need, they need significant improvements before this development even came in. And we're also working with K-Tempo to get some projects, uh, on, on the books and funded to improve some of these major intersections. One thing I would add, because the, uh, the, the traffic improvements are so significant that the developer's gonna have to do a fair amount, uh, Tech Dot and K-Tempo will, will do some. But I would recommend that we probably come back and look at that reimbursement agreement at some point in the future. It probably ought to be increased some because those weren't anticipated at the time this development was proposed. But now that we have the TIA, we've got a, well, it's not complete, but it's almost complete. And, uh, we've got a little better idea of what's needed. And, uh, Tech Dot's been a good partner for this because no, nobody wants, even the, the commercial properties that are gonna be developed there. People have to get there and get there in a safe manner. So, um, these are good recommendations that are coming forward. Um, but for the property to fully develop, especially with the multifamily and the single family, it's gonna require probably some significant improvements. It's gonna require some K-Tempo assistance. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Can you go back to your last slide, Mr. Kegel?
Sure.
I missed what you said about that. I know one of the, um, things that the council wanted was commercial to go in first. And, and thank you for that. You mentioned that. What did you say about this right here, sir?
And, and the developer wants commercial to go in first as well. In fact, their, their, their reimbursements are based on, uh, commercial development.
There you go.
So, um, what I said about these intersections need some significant improvements in order to handle the traffic that exists there today. Forget the development, there's, there are traffic problems there today. And we have contracted with an engineering company that has, uh, national expertise in developing complicated intersection solutions that don't require, um, completely rebuilding the intersection. There's no guarantee they're gonna come up with something here because you can see this is a little complicated when you have I-14 and 2410 so close together. Um, but, but they're, they're working right now on these solutions. But as I said, if, uh, the developer had enough tenants, he'd be building right now and Tech Dot will give them access for all the commercial tenants.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kegel.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, working with Tech Dot in Bayou County because this is really a big, big project.
It is.
And, um, thank you for the update. Um, Councilmember Segura.
Uh, thank you. And, um, we talked about the traffic light and that's front, right there in front of, uh, Dave and Buster's.
Yes, sir.
I know that was part of the agreement and stuff like that. I don't know if we, and, and I know that we had it, that was originally, we gotta do that. But it's kinda funny because, you know, you go down there and there's no traffic there and you're just sitting there waiting to turn left when there's left. There's nothing but a park.
Turn left into Dave and Buster's?
No, the other way.
Okay.
When there's nothing there, they're building something there. And it's like, why do we wait there for light? So I don't know if that's something that can be looked at because, you know, maybe some flashing yellow lights because most of the time you stop there.
Agree.
And you're just waiting there for nothing. And so it works good, but...
Yes.
At this time, it's not necessary.
We, we will see what we can do about the timing on this.
Yeah. And the left turn that goes into nowhere. If you're coming from, uh, from this side, even if, yeah, it's like, why am I, I'm not turning left. They're building something there. I don't even know what. So I don't know if it's there for a U-turn or what.
Well, there, there will be a, a much more significant development there, not just Dave and Buster's. And that's why we had to...
Yeah. So that light is gonna, you go into a parking lot because there's not a road there.
Yes.
So it's kinda weird.
Well, on the, if you're talking about towards the I-14 side, that's the auto dealer there.
Yeah. No, there's an, they've, they've been fixing it. There's, you know, right next to where they're building the QT and you go a little further down, right in front of Dave and Buster's. They're...
Right.
They cleared out that parking lot and they're building something there. So, but it's kinda weird. It points that way and it's like, who's turning in there? Nobody.
I'm, I'm with you. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Kegel, once again, thank you for the presentation.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Alvarez, can we get a motion adjourned?
Solomon.
Councilmember Solomon. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Enjoy your Thanksgiving holiday.